Today is Monday, June 23rd and the time is 6:31 PM. We're here for the work session for the budget workshop. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. Jim, I wanted you to notice that.
I've learned from the master, sir.
Item number two is citizens' appearance. We do not have anybody signed up to speak for the first citizens' appearance, so we will move on to item number three, which is the budget presentation and discussion regarding special revenue funds from Jessica.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you on this first budget workshop for the fiscal year 26 budget season. So this evening, I'll start by presenting the city's special revenue funds, and then Jerry Young will walk you through the water and sewer fund. And then we'll transition into the service and art organization presentations while you're here directly from them several community members who are requesting funding for fiscal year 26. And as a quick refresher, special revenue funds are used to account for the revenues that are legally restricted or committed for specific purposes. These funds ensure transparency and help us meet obligations tied to voter approval, contractual requirements, and dedicated revenue sources. Tonight's presentation will highlight several of the city's major special revenue funds, including the hotel occupancy tax fund, which is for short HOT, the municipal drainage utility district, or DUD, the infrastructure maintenance fund, IMF, the Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery, ROMC, the crime control and prevention district, CCPD, and then Capel Recreation Development Corporation, or CRDC. You can follow along in your council packets from pages one through 35. And I will be passing briefly after each fund to address any questions that you may have. So let's begin with the hotel occupancy tax fund. And you'll find it summarized in pages two to three. For fiscal year 26, the hotel occupancy tax fund is projected to generate 786,088 in revenue with a total expenditures of 547,957. Revenue is based on five open hotels in addition to revenue from two permitted short-term rentals. The economic development line is the amount rebated for hotels for building in Capel. This amount is based on five open hotels, of which two is currently receiving a contracted rebate amount. And the two hotels, it is the Four Points by Sheraton. And I am missing the second one, but I'll have that for you.
The law.
The law. And then in terms of the expenditures, if you can follow in the expenditure section, salary and benefits total 547,957, covering two full-time art center marketing positions. The services category are set by council because this is where funding for service and art organizations that meet the criteria under HOT funding are budgeted. And just to remind you, the criteria is based on tax code section 351, 101, which is the use of tax revenue to promote tourism in the convention and hotel industry. It is limited to the uses outlined in this section, which translates to an industry term of what drives heads and vets into the city of Capel. We currently see Capel Art Center Foundation, the Capel Arts Council, the Ballet Ensemble of Texas, the Community Corral, the Community Orchestra, the Community Theater, and the Capel Historical Museum that could potentially use these funds. Arts organizations are a total of 235,700 that qualify for HOT funding. In this line, you would also typically see the budgeted Chamber of Commerce Discover Capel Programming. However, this year, the chamber will require a bit more time to provide, for them to conduct some research to the cost of the programming, and will be submitting the request at a later time, which will likely be brought to you at a later time during the budget amendment process for during the fiscal year 26 budget season. And of course, this number can change based on your direction this evening. So at this time, if you have any question, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Are you done? Sorry.
No, no.
So with respect to the revenue side, what, how does it work on the taxes that are rebated back? Is that rebated back to the state? Or back to the hotels?
It goes back to the hotels.
So how does that work?
Hotel occupancy is one tax that we get directly from the hotels. It doesn't go to the state. They pay us directly.
Ah, okay.
And once we receive their payment, then they submit a request for the rebate, and then we cut a check to them.
Okay, thank you very much.
But we get their check first.
Yes, very good. Okay, no, that's, I just never really noticed that the rebate was there, but thank you.
So I'll get you, I'm gonna go ahead and ask one of you, Jim. So we, this is, you know, the HOT tax is actually relatively new for us because we only haven't had hotels for the last, what, eight or 10 years? So I see that there was a drop from the actual in '23, '24, about $80,000. Have we typically been going up every year? I don't, I mean, I'm assuming we have been, but because we've been adding hotels and occupancy's been good except for the COVID times, so.
Do you want me to give you, so I have this spreadsheet. So hotel occupancy tax has been going up. However, with the economic development, we've been getting more of that back.
Right.
So overall, you have seen an increase in revenues from year to year? So do you want me to tell you what they are?
Yeah, no, no, that's okay.
I can, I can share with you. So in '22, revenues, total revenues were 621,000. In '23, it was 758,000. And then in '24, the 1,077,000 is where we ended up.
Okay. Well, let's hope that trend is going because this is, this is a wonderful revenue stream for us. Okay, thank you very much. Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Jessica, you mentioned that the expenses include salary, benefits, and services. And in the service, does it include the budgeted for the qualifying service organization funding?
It does include it in that budget.
So that's the 338,300?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Go on.
Just to clarify more on that same point, Discover Capel is not in there at the moment, is that right? Is that why, that's why the big decrease?
Correct.
Is that right? So potentially, it probably will go up, is that the idea?
It will go up, just depending when they provide us the amount. And if it's not during the budget process, it would probably become, it would be part of the amendment process.
Okay. And then the one other, just real quick question, on the, back on the revenues, and this is almost too minor to even ask about, but the very top line, like the actual tax that we receive from the hotels, looks like it's dropped off just slightly. Do we know why that is? Like the very, very top line, not total revenues, but the hotel occupancy tax?
So for the hotel occupancy tax, we are budgeting based on some projections that we received from them.
Okay.
That maybe helped us obtain. And of course, then their actuals are coming in a little bit more.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
As a follow-up to what Don was saying, so Don was saying that there's a decrease compared to actual 2023, '24. And Kim, you said there's an increase.
So what I was saying is the hotels provided Mindy with some projections of what they thought their revenues would be, and that's what we use to budget. And then their actuals are coming in a little bit more.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
But we continue to budget based on their projections.
Understood. Thank you.
Jim?
So advertising is like pretty much the largest expensive scene. What all is included in that if it doesn't include Discover Capel?
The advertising is, we are paying for two art center employees who are involved in marketing.
Okay.
And then there's also, I can't remember the exact, it's about $80,000 is a advertising budget for the art center.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody okay? Good. Go on.
So the next fund is the municipal drainage utility district, or DUD. You can follow along on page four of your package. This is a special revenue fund restricted for stormwater control development and creek maintenance. To clarify, it is not wastewater. It is strictly based on collection and rainwater runoff that flows into our stormwater system. DUD is funded through stormwater fees applied to utility bills. Residential properties pay a flat rate, while commercial properties are built using a sliding scale. For fiscal year 26, we are projecting a total revenues of 8.2 million and total expenditures of about 5.7 million. Revenues, to break down revenues, stormwater revenue makes up 2.67 million. It is based on the 2019 rate study. These rates were adopted for a five-year period starting October 1, 2020. And this year, fiscal year 26, will be the final year of that cycle. Staff is currently exploring, conducting a new rate study for fiscal year 26. In addition to the user fees, fiscal year 26 includes a 5.5 million transfer from the general fund, which was authorized by council during the May 2025 retreat. This helps support the growing capital needs in drainage and stabilization projects. As far as expenditures, totaling about 5.7 million. And these are broken down by salary and benefits, which come over, just over 217,000. This covers 100% of our stormwater specialist, 50% of the assistant director of public works, and 25% of the construction inspector. Supplies are remaining flat at 3,700. Maintenance is 439,000, which includes federally required semi-annual street sweeping and creek cleaning, storm drain headwall repairs, creek mowing, and aerial photography. Services total about 924,000, which includes storm sewer analysis, a new stormwater rate study, the outfall headwall repair design, design for filcris loop, and outfall design services. And finally, capital outlay, which is coming in at 4.1 million, which is a 2.1 million increase from last year's budget. This includes several major projects, which you may recall from the presentation of the five-year forecast, that have now been included in the budget process. The Woodridge Channel Bank stabilization is one of the projects. The West Haven Trail Bridge Creek stabilization. Andrew Brown West Bank is another project. Also, the Arbor Brook Construction and the storm drain outfall reconstruction. To walk you through the fund balance in the bottom of the page, after all expenses, we project a net increase of about 2.5 million. That brings the ending fund balance to just over 5.5 million for fiscal year 26. And that concludes the review of the DUD budget. We'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Jessica, I have a process question.
Yes.
As an example, in Capel, when we say 4.1 million.
Yes, sir.
At this point, we truly expect to burn the 4.1 million, correct? In the next fiscal year?
That is a budgeted, so it's for a lot of the projects, like large-scale projects. Typically, with some of these large-scale projects, you'll see that they're kind of budgeted in that first year, and then they usually become like an encumbrance carryover as they are large-scale contracted projects.
So if something gets undone, it'll go back to fund balance and get applied next year?
If there's already a purchase order, an agreement, so they will just move forward into the next year. So the funding will move forward to the future year. But if it does not get used and the PO is not issued by the 9/30 date, it would go into fund balance.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you. So the difference between the total revenues, including the transfer in, and the total expenditures, two and a half million, is that two and a half million expected to be applied in the following budget year as part of another encumbrance carryover, or?
That, it's essentially the net, so that would be applied in, so we're projecting that by the ending balance from fiscal year 26 fund balance, it would be applied by the end of that, the fiscal year 26.
So Jim, if you recall during your council retreat, council authorized us to do the 5.5 million dollar transfers.
Yes, yes.
And so that's what we think we need to get us through with additional projects until we can do the rate study. And so we just went ahead and moved transfer 5.5 from the general fund to fund some projects to keep us going. So it's likely going to be used for projects in 2027 also.
That's what I was asking.
Yes.
So to the extent that there's a net plus, it's because the, we were already projecting certain projects and expenditures for those when the transfer was made. So the factors two and a half million dollar net after the end of the next budget period, we're expecting that that two and a half is still part of the projected projects, if that makes sense?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's what I figured, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
This is a follow-up to what Jim was asking. Jessica and Kim, this 2.5 million net, that would flow into the fund balance, correct? So, all right, so that's how I understood it. I thought that's what he was asking, but thank you.
Any other questions on the DUD?
Next, we'll move on to the IMF. And if you can reference page 17. So the IMF is a restricted fund dedicated to maintaining the city's infrastructure. It is supported by a voter-approved quarter of cent sales tax and transfers from the general fund. For fiscal year 26, total proposed revenues are approximately 7.06 million and total expenditures are about 6.8 million. Let's focus now on revenues and the breakdown for revenues. First starts with sales tax, which is projected to be just over 4.14 million, reflecting a 5% growth. Interest income is budgeted at 350,000. It is consistent with fiscal year 25 levels. And then the general fund transfer, which totals 2.56 million, which includes 1.1 for alley sidewalk and street maintenance from the streets division. And then we have a 1.22 to support facilities maintenance and 190,000 to support traffic infrastructure maintenance in fiscal year 26. Then you'll see a notable reduction compared to fiscal year 25, which included, in fiscal year 25, if you recall, the one-time transfer of 31.1 million to fully fund one-time projects for the next five years of facilities and traffic improvements that happen in fiscal, or are current fiscal year 25. For expenditures, the total 6.8 million. Salary and benefits total 176,500, which cover 100% of a construction inspector and 25% of a second construction inspector salary. Maintenance is budgeted at 3.5 million. This covers facilities maintenance. It covers street and alley repairs and traffic infrastructure improvements. Services includes, is budgeted at 138,574. And this is again the administrative service fee based on the cost allocation study that allocates an amount for each fund that uses services rendered from the general fund. Capital outlay is proposed at 3 million, which includes street repairs for Southwestern Boulevard. If you look at your fund balance, so after accounting for all revenues and expenditures, the IMF shows a net increase of about 177,000 and a projected ending fund balance of 61.85 million. Again, the fund balance does include the one-time transfer in fiscal year and current fiscal year 25 to fully fund the one-time facilities and traffic projects for the next five years of 31.1 million. And that concludes the review of the IMF's budget. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Just a quick question with IMF. So this is our sales tax. So obviously, we're showing the amended, or like where we're running there. Is it fair to say if we don't have any change in, in sales tax revenue, that that should go up about $2 million after we do the amended budget, approximately?
That's approximate, yes.
Yeah, just rough, it doesn't have to be exact, anything like that. But that's been trending pretty steady? And the actual been going up about the 5%?
It's pretty steady. It's, our assumption is about the 5% growth.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Jim?
So, so I take it, so we see again that big transfer. Was last year the first of the five years, then?
So it would have started in this year, fiscal year 25.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. Are you talking about the transfer in the revenue line item?
Mm-hmm.
So that, the 32 million included the 31 million one-time transfer?
Yes, yes, yes.
It was a one-time transfer that should fund projects for the next five years.
And so when we see the ending balance of 61,808, then that includes the money we're holding for future projects over the remaining four years?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Next?
Let's now turn to the Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery. You can follow on page 19 of your package. ROMC is a special revenue fund used to support the operations and maintenance of our cemetery. Revenues are generated primarily for burial rites, service and installation fees, and memorial sales. A portion of each burial sale, which is about 15%, is designated for the perpetual care fund to ensure long-term maintenance of the grounds. For fiscal year 26, total proposed revenues are approximately 2.15 million and total expenditures are about 2.2 million. In terms of revenues, burial rites is the first category, which we are projecting 1.63 million based on new pricing structure effective June 1, 2025. Service fees are projected at 372,150, which reflects the steady demand we anticipate based on the amended operating plan service trends. Memorial sales dropped to 10,000. This is because the cemetery is not yet fully operational in memorial item sales. They are currently only offering sale of Remembrance Bronze Butterflies. They expect this to gradually increase in future years as inventory becomes available and they return to full operations. The next category is installation fees, which we're projecting 80,000, holding flat compared to fiscal year 25. Interest income is estimated at 12,000 and miscellaneous revenues remain at 46,667, which includes lease and vendor license income. In terms of expenditures, the fiscal year 26 budget totals 2.24 million, broken down as follows. The first category is salary and benefits, which is 332,392, which support three full-time positions, a cemetery manager, an assistant cemetery manager, and a senior administrative assistant. Supplies are budgeted at 439,500, which covers items such as burial vaults, memorial inventory, and general operating supplies. Maintenance is projected at 428,352, which includes grounds upkeep, irrigation repairs, and facility improvements. Services total 784,876, which include professional services, burial contractors, and administrative cost allocations for services received from the general fund. And finally, transfers remain unchanged at 250,000, which reflects the mandated contribution to the perpetual care fund. Then the projected ending fund balance for fiscal year 26.
I'm gonna correct you. The 250,000 transfer is, the cemetery is paying the general fund back. For, in the early years, we had some operating transfers as the cemetery was getting up and running. Plus, phase, phase two of the cemetery, the city, the general fund, has taken some money to help pay for that. And so this is, over time, the cemetery is paying the general fund back for that.
Kevin had a question?
I can wait, and I just wanted, I was flying you down because I wanted to go ask a question when she was done. So I can wait.
So on the burial rites sales, the 1.627, does that reflect, does that include the 15% for the perpetual care fund? Or is that net of that 15%?
It's net.
Okay. So where is that money held?
The 15%? It's held in a separate trust fund that's called the perpetual care fund. And you see that in the audited financial statements.
Okay, but it's just, so it's not carried on any dedicated fund or anything like that?
It's not budgeted because you can't use it. The perpetual care fund cannot be used until all of the niches and plots are sold. And then only the interest can be used to maintain the cemetery in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Bijou? I can wait until you're done with the presentation.
I just have the last piece of the fund balance. For fiscal year 26, the projected ending fund balance for fiscal year 26 is 1.29 million. So this is down slightly from fiscal year 25 ending balance of 1.38 million due to the current year drawdown. Despite the dip, the fund remains in a healthy position. And that covers the review of the cemetery budget. And we'll answer any questions at this time.
I have Bijou, and then Mark, and then Kevin, and Ramesh.
You want to go first?
Okay. 1.6 million dollars projected budget for burial rites. How many lots are we anticipating to sell?
I don't know.
I don't have that answer for you, but I can get that.
So let's say, let's say last year's FI 25, how many lots did we sell for 1.3 million?
I don't know. That's detailed information that community experience keeps. We don't, we track the revenues. We don't get into the detail of how many lots, but we can find out for you and share that out.
Mark?
I just have a question about the memorial sales. Dropping from 320 to 10,000. You said it had been, I guess, discontinued and they were starting it up again. And at this point, they only have the butterflies?
Correct. So it's currently, they're only having the butterfly sale.
So what were they selling before that was, I guess, so hard to recreate and get ramping up again to?
So it's the, it's the headstones and the monuments. And so, because they've reduced their operations, they are sending customers directly to the vendor to make those purchases?
There we go.
Yeah. That was part of the amended operations that they did.
Yeah, I remember that now.
And they'll revamp that up later on, but they don't think it'll be?
Okay. So, and this might be detailed information. If you need to get back to me, that's completely fine. But the burial rites sales of the 1.6 million, I know that council, a couple meetings ago, we gave direction to change the, I guess, the non, it was, I can't remember the terminology, but like the non-resident rate to go from like around 7,000, like up to 10,000. All right, kind of everybody tracking with that? Does this number reflect that change? And any potential, you know, like, I guess, like how that, how that could affect sales of those non-burial rites? I just want to make sure that this is the most updated information based on that direction from council from a couple meetings ago?
That's correct. This revenues are based on what's going to be effective as of June 1st or was effective as of June 1st, 2025.
And I understand that this is a budget, but do we have any anticipated effect of? Because I know that the number that was presented to us was, you know, based on a study from a consultant and things like that. So did that consultant have any direction or any feedback on, well, council, we advise this, council did this, this is what we think is going to happen to the sales? Like, would this number have been higher if we would have? Does that make sense, what I am asking?
It does, but again, I don't think she's going to be able to answer that.
Or is that just like, is that what the number that, that community experience has provided?
Right, Sherry is the one that provided all of the revenues. And she did it after you.
Okay.
After the workshop.
I would be, I would be very curious to get more information based on our council action. You know, because I'm not saying it's the wrong move, but it is a, is a different move than we, that, you know, than we were advised to by the consultant, so.
I will tell you, they've sold two non-residents at 10,000 each.
Oh, there you go. Is that reflected in, no, just kidding.
They went into effect. Sherry let us know, hey, we sold two.
Okay, okay.
So that, just because we were wondering.
Yeah, and I'll be honest, I had the same, the same thoughts as like, you know, what will this, you know, what will this pricing structure do to those? Because I remember part of the presentation was, we obviously want to take care of our residents, but those non-resident sales were a key component of making sure that the cemetery perpetual fund was funded and things like that. So just. So just more of a curiosity, and I say that with the idea of that if we, when do we, when would we get feedback if maybe we overshot it a little bit, we need to bring it back to generate more sales? That's kind of.
Why don't we ask for like about three or four months of operating and then ask them to come in with an update?
Mayor, I would love that. That would be fantastic.
Thank you. I have Ramesh, and then Bijou.
Thank you, Mayor. Jessica, I think this is just an observation. I'm sure the R O M C team is aware of this. The ending balance seems to be going down from actual to amended to proposed. And when I look at the detail, it primarily is being driven by memorial sales. So hopefully, they're aware that any, the fund balance is going down, and we need to do something to the memorial sales.
So talking with Sherry this afternoon, she reminded me that her communication to council was, come October first, they would start meeting, they have a waitlist on the preneed, they would start working those preneed waitlists. And then their goal is by spring of twenty-six to have it fully operational. They need to get another person on board so that they can help with the sales and do some of that. So the goal is by spring to be fully operational.
Thank you.
Bijou?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The trust fund that you mentioned, what is the balance on that account?
I'll find out for you.
Okay. How much did we transfer initially to that account?
To the trust fund?
Yeah. We are transferring two-fifty out every year.
Oh, no, no, no. Two different niches.
Okay. So initially, we put some money to develop the area, right?
Okay, so.
So two-hundred-and-fifty? The fifteen percent, so when operations started with the cemetery on day one, there was zero dollars in the trust fund. As each sale occurred, there's fifteen percent. So there wasn't money transferred in.
Right. So I understand that's a separate account. We don't know the balance on that account.
But we do, she just estimated it.
Yeah, I'm going to look at the audited financial statements.
So my follow-up question, next question is, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand we are transferring out, where is that money coming from?
From the cemetery itself. I mean, as part of the sales, it's part of the revenue, you know, in terms of, it's considered an expense. So I'm going to tie two things together, not to bog down tonight about the R O M C because there's still a philosophy and transition. That two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is being carried forward because we've been paying back the general fund. At any point in time, you could say, we're so far into this with the cemetery, we don't need to be paying back the general fund, the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Right? So that starts affecting your bottom line on the balance. As far as your revenue is concerned, I still question, even the way that you were questioning, what is your ultimate philosophy? If it's break even, or is it to preserve for our residents, or is it to make money? So while you have provided direction to your point of going to the ten thousand dollars, that was driven by purely, from what I understand and listening to the meeting, by purely the fact that you want to preserve the cemetery for the residents of Capel, which is a philosophy, that's a policy. So you just have to understand that as we go forward, when you start asking some of the specifics about the trends, there could be a day, based on the philosophy and policy, that this is having to be funded by the general fund, not feeding the general fund. Right? Okay. Just want to make sure we all understand that.
Brianna?
So to that point, Mike, then, I think that's where, to Bijou's question, maybe to Kevin as well, I'd love to understand the details between, the details behind the one-point-six, right? Because you're right.
There is a percentage of, what you're looking for is a percentage. Let's just say they sell nine-hundred, but I don't know this.
Right. What's that policy?
Yeah. And the idea is that one-point-six is generated based on a sixty percent sale to residents and forty percent sales to non-residents.
Right, right.
That's what you're looking for.
That's what I'm looking for.
Got it? Understood.
Which I think is kind of where you were, Bijou, on what is that number? How did we get to it, right?
To follow up to that is, initially, city funded X amount of money to develop that area, X million, right?
It's all the city's money. Yes, that's correct.
Right. So, okay. So I'm saying, we invested, I don't, do you know how many millions we invested to?
The second phase was close to six million dollars. I don't know, we had, we'd given the report before, I don't know off the top of my head what the initial cost was back in the late two thousands for the cemetery.
So to answer your first question, per the audited financial statements, the perpetual care fund has a fund balance of one-point-eight million.
So that's a fifteen percent, right?
Correct. Since the cemetery began.
Yeah. One point you said.
Eight.
And of that, sometime in the future, way in the future, only the interest can be used.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
For the maintenance?
For the maintenance, right? Which is going to be less than what it costs to maintain the cemetery, so you're going to be funding the cost of the cemetery out in the operation. Because you won't have lots to spot, spaces to sell, lots, spaces.
Dawn, and then John.
Follow-up, just to clarify, so how much does R O M C owe the general fund? I don't know if "owe" is the right word, but how much, what's the balance that we're sort of whittling down, I guess?
Yeah. So I'm looking. Yeah. So the total that the general, to repay to the general fund is about three million.
Okay.
And we have, we started the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in twenty-twenty-three. So we have done twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, so only three years.
So there's three million remaining now? Or that was the original?
That was the original.
That was the original. So we're down seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars already?
And that was phase two. And then, as I said, some operating transfers when we first established the cemetery, we had, the general fund was helping fund the operations. And then there was the memorial gardens, there were some park development fees that were used that we were repaying.
I hate to do this, but we're, we've still got one more presentation. We've got a bunch of citizens that were supposed to be here at seven, so we're running a little long on time.
Should we start going back to talk about the budget on this?
What's that?
Are we starting back? I think it is, I think we maybe should consider, I say forgiving that debt or not repaying the debt, I guess, about the two-hundred-and-fifty. I mean, it's just, it's sort of working capital or whatever for today's maintenance, because we're showing a deficit anyway for this year, right? So to get that deficit, we're paying the other pocket of the money, so, I mean, maybe we don't have to decide tonight, but I do wonder if it's two-hundred, two-point-two-five million roughly left, do we just stop repaying the general fund? I guess I would propose that. Does anybody have thoughts?
So what's the, what's the effect? Is Rolling Oaks currently carrying the two-point-two-five million-dollar liability on its books?
No, it was basically, so it was pre-COVID, so gosh, yeah, our memory is going to have to go to tackle here. There were, the phase-two expansion, when it came forward to the council, let's say there was kind of a menu of some additional things to do. And if I remember right, we did issue the initial debt for the cemetery. And so what happened was, much like even transferring to the IMF or the other funds and capital replacement fund and so forth, you basically, the council chose to cash upfront the balance of that three, let's just call it three million dollars. So to your point, it wasn't necessarily a loan, it wasn't a debt issuance or anything along those lines to view it under that particular scenario. You could take the position that you had a thinking process back then, and now as you look forward, what's the difference between just transferring it over and using it for construction today, just like you're doing for other things? I'm just saying that those, for your consideration, if you do that, that's a viewpoint.
As we continue to add, I guess, there'll be another garden to develop, or there will be maintenance in the future or something, I don't, I don't know why we just don't keep the funds over there since we've put them over there and just let them build up over time instead of paying the general fund back two-hundred-and-fifty, so it would net out to one-hundred-and-seventy thousand or something that would be added to the fund balance for purposes in the future.
But that was kind of my question. So is the general fund carrying that as an asset to the balance? So there's no note, there's no?
There was no formal do-to, do-from, or advance-from, advance-to.
So it was just?
It was a transfer over to the R O M C.
And then a philosophical decision to?
It's just a direction that we were received, pre-COVID, that we've just carried, you know, forward and started after we finally got things going.
So it's not going to adversely affect Rolling Oaks' books or inflate the general fund by stopping the payment?
I mean, it would, it would reduce the expenditures in Rolling Oaks, it would reduce the revenue in general fund by two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
But at the end of the day, that doesn't make any difference for the city's overall picture.
And the next question. The next question becomes, and that's what they're working on, part of the operational plan, much like with the C I P and everything else, is what's on the horizon over the next five years for the cemetery? And due to some of the funds that y'all have set aside, do we need to come to you and recommend transferring some of those funds for the cemetery for any particular expansions or anything along those lines? Much like you do with the IMF, right, or capital replacement fund. So that is something that the staff is looking at, and that's all part of that overall operation plan. Y'all have taken the first steps of giving us the directions, there's just more steps to go in this operation.
So we could be transferring to general fund and then transferring new funds later?
New funds later.
Bring it back, sorry.
Kevin?
My question to you is, is that I think we're seeing, you know, this deficit in this proposed budget because of what other council members have said about the memorial sales and the installation fees being greatly reduced. So are you proposing just a, like a one-time or just like cut it off completely? And really, the reason why I'm asking is that if they do ramp up memorial sales and stuff like that, again, you should see those revenues come back. But, so I'm just trying to clarify, like, is this a one-time thing because we're seeing the lower, you know, the lower revenue?
I guess at this point, with the knowledge, with the information we have at the moment, I would just say we just stop transferring the money back. Because it sounds like there wasn't a note, a loan, or anything, so technically we could, you know, you could do something later if we decided if something changed again.
Going to that proposal, my question to Tim or Jessica is, do we, do we, right now, we have an expectation for the two-point-two-five to come in over the next nine years, at two-fifty a year, right? So do we say, do we write it off? In that case, does the general fund get impacted for the next nine years?
It, I don't think there's.
It's not set up that way.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah. It's just, we would just stop that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar transfer. We wouldn't have Rolling Oaks show it as an expenditure, and it wouldn't be shown as a revenue in the general fund, and we would just stop doing that. Because there's, it's not like a business where we've recorded a liability in the Rolling Oaks and a receivable in the general fund, right? Because there's, there was no formal debt arrangement.
Another way to say that is, we're not paying back the capital replacement fund or the IMF fund for what we advanced to it, we're using it for the purpose that it was done. We're, we use the money to do the expansion of the cemetery. In this instance, it was just expressed, so it's a payback.
Mark?
You know, I believe we just leave it as is right now and see what happens with the sales this year. You know, are they going to even come in at one-point-six? I got a feeling probably not. I think we're going to like stifle the purchases, and they'll kind of level off. But, you know, hopefully we'll see this number, and maybe it continues to grow, and then, you know, that two-fifty comes inconsequential.
So you're saying?
Just for this year. Just to see what happens after we do this traffic.
Repay the two-fifty this year?
Yeah.
Because in theory, if, when they start processing all the waiting lists.
Yeah, exactly.
Then they'll start collecting all those sales. So it should, should quite a bit of.
Should. All right, everybody, I'm going to move us along.
Is there any clear direction?
Is the staff supposed to do?
We're muddled as usual.
Yes, we are.
So leave it?
Leave it, I think is the, I think what I'm hearing is, we're interested in seeing where the trend is going to go. And I did make a note that we will have an update in three to four months on R O M C, and that should be within the budget time to, no, it won't be, it'll be after that.
It's not a hilt of doubt.
No, it's not.
We can do it next year.
So leave it as is for now, and let's monitor. I agree with Mark, you know, the, I think raising the prices was the right thing to do. I also think it's going to cut into the sales, so let's kind of see what happens. All right.
Next, just wanted to provide a summary. I already covered it during the public hearing, but the summary for this one is five-point-zero-five million for expenditures, four-point-four million for, I'm sorry, five-point-five million for budgeted revenues, and four-point-four million for expenditures. And at this time, if there's any additional questions, you will let me take those. If not, I can move on to the next funds. And then the final fund we have is the Capel Recreation Development Corporation, C R D C, and please reference page twenty-one of your packet. The C R D C is a special revenue fund dedicated to the enhancement of Capel's recreation and cultural assets. Funding is generated from a half-cent sales tax that was reauthorized by voters in twenty-thirteen and valid through twenty-thirty-eight. This tax is specifically restricted to improvements in recreation, facilities, trails, drainage, and streetscapes. For fiscal year twenty-six, the C R D C fund is expected to generate five-point-eight million in total revenue, with planned expenditures totaling a five-point-four million. This results in a projected net of approximately four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-nine, increasing the fund balance to about thirty-four-point-three million. To break down the revenue, the largest portion of the C R D C revenue is from the half-cent sales tax, which is shared between C R D C operations and debt service. For fiscal year twenty-six, eight-point-three million is projected in total sales tax collections. Of that, three-point-three million is allocated to the C R D C's debt service. In addition to sales tax, there's also the art center operations, which are projected to bring in seven-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Interest income is estimated at one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. For the expenditures, we have a total of five-point-four million for fiscal year twenty-six, supporting both personnel and project needs. Salary and benefits are about one-point-three million, supporting eleven full-time and ten part-time, non-benefitted positions. Supplies just under one-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, supporting operational needs such as cleaning and maintenance materials, performance equipment, and general event supplies. Maintenance budgeted at one-point-one-five million. This covers work across parks, trails, facilities, and recreation centers to ensure safety and accessibility. Services just over one-point-five million, this includes cost of utilities, art center present events, artist fees, performance contracts, contracted security, trails master plan, and the administrative services provided by the general fund. The capital outlay at one-point-two-three million, funding various park and facility improvement, which includes several projects. The first, some of the notable projects is going to be the spectator shade installation at four separate locations, at Andrew Brown Park West soccer game fields, a phase-two of con restoration, and River Chase playground structure replacement. And lastly, for the transfer out, is a very minor transfer out of three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-one to the E S replacement fund for the one year of useful life. And if we can reference page twenty-eight for the C R D C debt service fund, I'm sorry, page twenty. And this accounts for principal and interest payments to the C R D C supported bond debt. Interest payments on C R D C supported bond debt, this fund is structured to reflect only the amounts required to meet the scheduled payment. For fiscal year twenty-six, total revenues and expenditures are balanced at three-point-three-four million. The entire amount is supported by C R D C sales tax. The fund maintains a flat ending balance of two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-nineteen. And that concludes the C R D C budget review.
Brianna?
Can you help me? What stands out is the interest income, the decline. Can you help me understand that?
Yes. So that is, that is based like on market conditions, so that's typically. Yes, so that is, that is based like on market conditions. So that's typically, um, just an assessment we do on market conditions and what we're seeing in the actuals coming in. So that's adjusted based on that, the market.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Ramesh?
Quick question. Uh, on the topic of interest and income, the actual for twenty three, twenty four was actually one point seven million? Seems a pretty high number.
Yes. Yeah, during that year, we were seeing a pretty high, um, interest income returns, but that is, that's dropped down. The volatility of the market, that is significantly reduced.
Thank you. That was the post-COVID. Bone?
Bijan?
Yeah, Mike, uh, last time when we talked, we were spending about close to two million, two million dollars for a heart center. Right with the board and probably everything, right, total.
I trust what you're telling me, yes.
Right, that's what.
Yeah.
Now, we wanted to meet the operational cost of a half a million, um, or something to that number. Are we there?
If I, if I understand your question, so it's generating about seven fifty five, it's costing about one point two. So it's over half of, uh, on the cost recovery, if, if I'm understanding your question.
Well, one point two is not the total, right?
No, as far as that's the personnel, but we increased the personnel and so forth. I, I, off the top of my head, I don't know if they're hugging two million dollars now or not.
Are you asking what the total operating costs are, budgeted for the art center?
Yeah, for the art center.
I'll see if I can figure it out.
If you don't have the number, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll get it to you if I can't get it if you want.
That's fine. But, uh, well, not only that, but I would say, uh, respecting the, the question, the objective is still to get us about half. So it is moving in that particular direction. I don't know if y'all.
The English, the staff, you're bringing more shows?
We're bringing more shows. The revenue, we are charging a little bit more for the shows because we're starting, you know, this is, we're going into year five finally. Uh, so you're finally figuring out what the price point is. Um, so yes, the answer is, it's slowly moving in that direction. The two million dollars, that's not right.
Yeah, that's what I, you told me.
Any other questions for Jessica?
And that concludes the special revenue funds.
Okay, we're gonna change our order, Jerry. I hope you're okay to, to go last tonight. We've got a sequence of people coming in that I don't wanna put off for an hour. So if you don't mind, let's do the, um, service organizations next, and then we'll conclude with your presentation on the sewer, water and sewer budget. If you don't mind. All right, um, item number five is presentation and discussion regarding the service organizations request. Just as a reminder, presenters will have five minutes for their presentation. Service organizations will be notified by the Strategic Financial Engagement Office if their request will be included in the budget once the budget has been passed in August. Tonight, we have, uh, six different, five different presentations. First is the Capel Historical Museum with Miss Chris Long. Chris?
Gosh, I was last on the.
Yeah, when she got past.
Yes, you are. I'm last.
You're last?
I'm last, yeah.
Oh, well then, who was supposed to be first?
Chamber.
Chamber.
They're down.
She's coming, yeah.
They're coming right now.
Oh, well, if you don't mind then, we'll, we can do it that way.
So do you want me to go?
Uh, it's since they were told first, let's let them go.
Okay. Hi there.
Hello.
Howdy, howdy.
Good to see you.
Good to see you all. So we're. How are we?
Good, aren't you?
Hello, everyone.
So you missed my little, uh, my pre, um, you've got five minutes for your presentations. You're gonna be notified by our, our financial department. If your request is included in the budget, once that budget has been passed in August, and we will allow about five minutes for questioning as well. So Robin, here is your floor.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff and everyone in attendance. Thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Robin Aguanyaga. I am honored to serve as the new C E O of the Capel Chamber of Commerce. I arrived here in April. So I'm just at sixty days in, um, and really looking forward to sharing a bit about, um, what we've been up to and what's to come as we move through the remainder of this year and into two thousand and twenty six. Uh, with a renewed focus on growth and our, uh, community partnership with the city. Um, to give you just a little bit of background about myself, um, I'm a North Texas native. I was born and raised in Richardson, Texas. Spent a little time at Texas Tech University, getting my Bachelor of Science degree in hotel restaurant and institutional management. And I spent the last, I would say, fifteen years in wedding and event planning, um, and then the last six years as the Director of Marketing and Communication for the Grapevine Chamber of Commerce. Um, I am extremely passionate about helping businesses grow and thrive in their communities and utilize the tools that are available, um, in the chamber and in the city to really grow and thrive. Uh, so what your chamber provides, um, just a little bit about us, the mission of the Capel Chamber of Commerce is to empower businesses' success through strategic advocacy, high impact connections, and expert support while preserving the close knit spirit of our community. Um, we promote and support our local businesses, advocate for the interests of businesses, provide networking opportunities, and offer resources to support and help businesses thrive. The chamber's role goes beyond networking. We are economic accelerators, talent connectors, and champions of the community. Uh, the Capel Chamber of Commerce is primarily funded by our membership investments, sponsors, fundraising events, and of course, city funding. Just a few facts and figures about what we've been up to, just to dive a little deeper. Um, we are a nonprofit organization led by our member businesses. We have a twenty-three volunteer board members, two full time staff, and one part time contract staff member. So a lot getting done with, um, a very small team. Three hundred and fifty-eight, uh, business investors in growing one hundred plus networking events. Very active, uh, chamber communities, including Community Government Affairs Leadership Steering Committee, working well in Capel, the Education Committee, ambassadors, and, um, specific event committees. Uh, on a digital platform basis, we have around seventy-six thousand, uh, member page hits to date this year. Um, and around seventy-one online, uh, seventy-one thousand, excuse me, online business directory searches. So that's people online searching for a couple businesses, um, that they can utilize and support. And, uh, most importantly, we earned our three star accreditation in two thousand and twenty-three. And that means that of the seven thousand chambers nationwide, only one hundred and ninety-four are accredited, which puts your chamber in the top three percent of chambers nationally. Um, for the year to date, two thousand and twenty-five, uh, we have graduated a leadership Capel class of thirteen leaders. We hosted the State of the City Luncheon, continued all of our networking events like Growth Group and Business Offline. Uh, facilitated multiple ribbon cuttings and traveled to the state Capitol for a Capel Day with a very large group. And, um, to give you a little insight on what we have planned for two thousand and twenty-six, uh, we are enhancing our event offerings. So from Taste of Capel to Leadership Capel, we're gonna be investing in higher quality experiences that will reach a broader audience in the community and more visibility for our sponsors and community. Uh, we are relaunching our monthly membership luncheons with programs that focus on local economic drivers, legislative and economic updates, and topics that impact our community, like the upcoming F one race in Arlington and the FIFA World Cup. We're gonna be partnering with the I S D and Dallas College, um, to see how we can assist with, with talent pipeline development. And you'll see a workshop series start in two thousand and twenty-five that will ensure local businesses are informed on everything from A I to cybersecurity and, um, all the free services offered by SCORE and the S B A. And we'll be, um, shifting our focus on social media storytelling, and I know I have about a minute left, so I'm gonna skip down a little bit here. Our two thousand and twenty-six program of work. One minute, okay. Our, our two thousand and twenty-six program of, uh, work offers some new offerings, including the luncheons that I mentioned earlier, two thousand and twenty-six workshop series, uh, additional orientations that'll provide our businesses, uh, further ways that they can utilize, um, our web offerings, a few more signature events. Um, and this year, we're asking for a, um, four percent increase, um, over our year over year ask that we've had for several years now, which will make up for some increased costs in our events, um, and the addition of the additional luncheons, um, and workshops. Um, and I just want to thank the city for, um, this mutually beneficial partnership. We amplify the voice, voice of business and promote local commerce and help build the civic, civic fabric that makes Capel an exceptional place to live and work. We're deeply grateful for the city's continued support and we are committed to a continued partnership. Any questions you may have, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. You jump?
So that, okay, thank you for raising the funding ask because our records reflect that for twenty-five, twenty-six, it was forty-five, five hundred. And now you're asking for sixty-four, seven forty? Okay, thank you.
The amended ask.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Bijan?
How much do you charge for Capel, Leadership Capel for individuals?
Uh, Leadership Capel, I believe, is eight seventy-five for individuals and it's a ten month program.
How much, I'm sorry?
Ten, it's eight seventy-five and it's a ten month program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time and appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, our next, uh, presentation is Carson's Village. Welcome, come on in.
Thank you, thank you.
So you, uh, I need to give you my little five minute, or thirty second speech.
You're, you're. I've got my timer already right here.
All right, you've got no more, you've got five minutes.
I'm just here to supply. You can, you can sit anywhere. Okay, I'm just.
You've got five minutes for your presentation. Uh, you'll be notified by the Budget Department. That's the Strategic Financial Engagement Department.
All right.
By the end of August, if your grant is included, and we will include some time for some questions at the end, so have at it.
All right, I will. Here we go. All right. Uh, this is my son, Carson. On April twenty-eighth of two thousand and seventeen, my life changed forever. It was a Friday night. I came home. Uh, he'd had a bad day at school. Uh, didn't really tell us what happened. Uh, he, he didn't wanna go next door with us when we went to see some work that had been done in the neighbor's yard. So, uh, my oldest is a trainer at the high school. Uh, he was at the, uh, softball game. My, uh, April and I went next door with my middle son to see the work that had been done. Ryan and I went back to the, the house. I walked inside, went upstairs, and he had taken a pair of pajama pants and hung himself in the safety rail in our room. And I pulled him down. We had to call nine one one, went to the hospital. They pronounced him that night, and I hadn't planned my own funeral, much less my son's funeral. I didn't know what to do or where to go. So when we left, we called my family, we called her family, and we called our bus family. And I called our bus family. We own a Texas Stadium shuttle bus with five other families. Uh, we've all known each other for thirty years. Our kids have grown up together like first cousins. We've literally gone on over a hundred trips with them. We, we just went to, all the dads went to Metallica concert a couple of weekends ago. We took some of the kids. And they came in town, took care of us, and they did all the things that we needed to do. And I realized how fortunate we were to have a bus family and are tied to the community. And so what I wanted to do was, uh, I'm gonna see right here, uh, create an organization with a vision that no one should face loss alone. And, you know, we, we were fortunate to have that support, but not everybody does. So we wanna help families navigate the journey to healthy grieving after the loss of a loved one. So that includes, uh, uh, access to services. We wanna make sure there's community support out there so that they get all the things that they need and that they have equity in grief, you know, it just because grief doesn't, uh, look at how much money you make or what you're worth. The grief happens ever, to everybody all across the board. It's so important that they get it. So the journey for Carson's Village, and it's unique for everybody, because people grieve in different ways. Mom grieves different than dad, kids grieve different than parents. And it starts off with direct support, which is where we help them from passing to the funeral. We identify the resources that they need and walk them through that process. Then everybody gets a call thirty days out to check in to see how they're doing. A lot of times they're okay, you know, sixty-ish percent of the time, but other times they're struggling. They have thoughts, thoughts of self harm. We need to jump into action and get them the resources they need. And to do that, we have a direct support, uh, excuse me, uh, group support program where they get free, uh, group support twice a month. We've got a, a peer-to-peer program we offer so that moms that have lost a child could be paired with other moms that have lost a child, or a dad who's lost a child, suicide to another dad. Cause you can, you can see that journey ahead. You've got somebody to talk to, and then we've got an agreement with, uh, uh, BetterHelp that allows them to get, uh, two or three months of free counseling. And so it's just really that journey that we help every single family to do, and our impact, um, on the citizens of Capel that we've helped. We really, when we took off, this was one of the first places we really kinda hit hard early on, but now we, we help families all across the country. The first year, we helped eighty-two families. Last year, we helped almost twenty-three hundred. Uh, the first family we ever helped was here in Capel. And then I just wanna take a moment to talk about our mission a moment. So, uh, Janine is here with me. She was the fifty-third family, sixty-third family that we helped here in Capel. She lost her son, and we sprung into action and, and helped her, and she's been there to support us, and clearly she's here tonight because she's done a lot to support our organization. Um, we've, the very first family we had, we, it was a mom that was referred to us by the Capel Police Department. We went over and helped the family. They didn't know what to do or where to go. We walked them through that process. There was a family here about a year ago that lost a child, and, um, mom and dad were really struggling. So we had to really step in and work with them. It happened on Easter Sunday, so that just made it even worse. And then we helped a, uh, helped a family who lost a father. It was a dad that, uh, um, that, that passed. The family was really hurting. They didn't know what to do. He was the, you know, kind of the stability of the family, and we wanted to make sure that we got every, got them everything they needed. So you can tell, we've been a part of the Capel fabric. The first family, the sixty-third family, all the rest, the eighty-five hundred. I mean, we've had all kinds of families in Capel, and we wanna look, ask for funding so we can continue to do that. Um, some of the results we have, sixty-six improvement in ability to perform at work. So when we do our continuing support, we, we go through and ask them questions so we can track our impact. Sixty-five percent improvement in, uh, tasks at home, sixty percent improvement in ability to make and keep close relationships, sixty-one percent with ability to enjoy leisure outdoor activities, and seventy percent in hobbies. So we track them. Every time we call them, either monthly or quarterly, we'll follow up with them to make sure they're getting, uh, all the resources they need. And if they don't have it, we'll get them those resources, and it will follow up to make sure they're, that they are healing in a healthy way. And it's, it's a continuation, and they can always call us between check-ins if they need something. They have our phone number, uh, email, easy for them to contact us. Five minutes and I'm done. I didn't wanna get yanked. So I know I went through a lot of information. Um, so we're just asking for funding to continue to help support the families in, uh, in Capel. Do y'all have any questions about what we do or?
Council, you have any questions for Jason? Brianna?
Jason, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Of the twenty-three hundred families that you helped last year, is that right, two thousand and twenty-four, um, what percentage of those were Capel?
So the Capel ones that we had, it was a very small percent.
Okay.
It was about, last year, we helped about twenty-two, I think, twenty-one, twenty-two. So part of what this would be is to, right now, we do give brochures to the police department, but I wanna expand that and get that to the, the paramedics also. Uh, so that they have them in, in the ambulances when they go out, and then just make, working with Chief Barton to make sure he ever, they have all the resources they need. And, and we're kinda shifting our model a little bit and really focusing more on our partners, and by becoming a partner with us, that'll give us more time and more focus on the police department, the fire department, and all that to make sure we can get those numbers up.
And I think my follow-up question you just answered was more of the, the funding, cause for the, I think you asked for, I don't have my glasses unfortunately, um, was it thirty-seven hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, um, like, operational for you guys to do what you need to do.
Yeah, that's operational, and we stayed with those families for up to two years. So that, so that cost is not only just the cost for this year, hopefully we get funding next year, but if it, we don't get funding next year, that includes us supporting those families for that additional year after, to make sure they're getting all the resources that they need. That pays for the programs, the peer-to-peer, the group support, all those things. That pays for the programs, the peer-to-peer, the group support, all those things that we do for the families.
Thank you.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Brianna actually asked my question, so.
Okay. Bijan?
Yeah, just what is your total budget?
Our total budget? This year, it'll be probably about $386,000. So we're not real big. It's mainly just labor, and what we've invested in is Salesforce. So Salesforce is the backbone of what we do. I've got eight advocates and a lead advocate, and so each one of them's got a Microsoft tablet. And so through Salesforce, they can call, text, and email all through Salesforce. And so I've got people in each one of the time zones across the US to make sure we can cover everything. And that's what we really go into. It's the labor, it's the program creation, it's the things like that that we really focus our time on. And then we're looking to expand those partnerships and continue to expand the budget. I have one more year of my day job, and then my goal, a year from June 29th, which is my birthday. Thanks for having fireworks last week for my birthday, I appreciate it. I could retire, and I could do this full-time. So that's what we're pushing towards and working that budget for.
So what's your main source of revenue coming from? Where is it coming from?
So we have partnerships, like Baylor Scott White pays us to support them, DISD, HIS, Houston ISD. We support the entire South Division of Common Spirit, which is St. Luke's in Houston, St. Joseph, Bryan College Station. We're across nine states for Common Spirit. We support Methodist in Houston. I've got a proposal out to Texas Health, I'm talking to Parkland, I'm talking to some of the ones up here too. So we get funding from those partners, and then we do, we have philanthropic dollars that come in, we have a golf tournament that's got, brings in about $120,000. We play, it's out of Bear Creek, west and east, we play both sides. And we have about 300 golfers and volunteers that come out for that, this will be the eighth annual. And then grants, Moody funded us, Meadows has funded us. So I try to have multiple baskets, so I'm not relying on one particular revenue source.
Thank you for the details.
Any other questions? Jason, thank you very much.
Thank y'all, I appreciate it. Y'all have a great evening, thank you for your time.
Y'all are welcome to stay, by the way.
I want to go get dinner. Thank you.
Bye, Jason.
All right, next is our high school band boosters with Erin, I'm going to butcher this last name, Malahowski?
She's not in the room yet, let's hear it.
And Tara Henderson. Hi there, I think I just butchered Erin's last name.
Oh, Brianna, can you please teach me?
Anyway, we have Erin and Tara here to talk about the high school band boosters.
If you can't say your name right, you get money.
Yeah, it's pretty much phonetic by.
I tried Malahowski.
Yeah, Malahowski.
Oh, okay. So you guys have five minutes to present, and then that'll leave us about five minutes for questions afterwards. And there should be a clicker on the.
Oh, this is.
Try the other direction.
Oh.
Other way.
Other way.
All right, hello, I'm Tara Henderson. I just finished up two years as the Capel Band Booster President, so I'm officially hired for that role. And I have had three kids in the Capel Band program.
Hi, I'm Erin Malahowski. I'm one of the co-treasurers for the band, and I have a kid who's going to be the junior clarinet player in the band. So, as you might have heard over the years, the Capel Band has been honored so many times for all of its hard work. And we just have the 25th anniversary of when Mr. Mason led the band to winning state for, when, back when they were 4A. Yay! And one of those fabulous honors was in 2015, when the City of Capel granted $30,000 of money to help send the band to march in London's New Year's Day Parade. And we are just continuing to work so hard. These kids, they are currently ranked 16th in the nation by one of these ranking services that is very, very well thought of, so.
All right, so for those of you that don't know, the Capel Band consists of anywhere from 350 to 400 students, which is almost about 10% of the entire Capel High and New Tech student body. So we have a lot of the community represented just in our band program. So in the fall, for those of you that have been to any of the football games, you know that we have a marching band, and we are at all of the games and part of the fun Friday night magic. We have a varsity and JV marching band, which is unique for program. So once that season stops, when we do competitions, we move into concert season, where the students are divided into seven different concert bands. And then our color guard actually goes on, and they do competitions as well throughout the winter, and we usually have two or three guard teams that do that.
So this, all this excellence and amazing and hard work and stuff like that comes at a cost, and so a lot of the cost is borne by the families paying band fees. So for this upcoming year, a varsity marching band member will be charged $1,700. And JV marching band, because they don't compete in as many competitions, only pay $1,200. And then the color guard, which is part of the varsity marching band, they pay the $1,700 plus a winter guard fee, so $2,600.
So last year, this was our budget, we have an amazing treasury team, two treasurers and some assistants now, so that's awesome. So last year, I'll just go over really quickly, our program expenses were $840,000. It seems crazy, I know my mom was floored by that number, but it serves a lot. We feed the kids, we take them on competition trips, and obviously the equipment and the semi-trucks and all those things. We were able to grant financial aid of $21,000 to students. We will never turn a student away. We will do more fundraising, or we've had parents give extra money to be able to make sure every student that wants to participate. And then our operating expenses last year were $13,000. And then she'll cover more of the bottom part in the next slide.
So for 2526, we're projecting that the program expenses are going to rise above $900,000 because, as everybody knows, the price of everything is going up. So we're projecting that we're going to be giving out about $23,000 in financial aid for families in need, and we're, we think we're going to be able to keep the operating expenses at $14,000. And it's such a tiny percentage of what we spend, that, and that's why I proudly put the operating expenses out there. So the band fees cover 75% of all those expenses.
Yeah. So as you know, we're here to talk about Dublin, Ireland. It is such an honor that our band was invited to the Performance Tour of Ireland and the St. Patrick's Day Festival Parade.
And the itinerary looks amazing, and of course, the absolute pinnacle of it is going to be not just the Cliffs of Moher, but marching in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the original one.
And families are also going to be invited on this trip. Obviously, they'll be paying their own expenses. So the day of the parade, there will be over 500,000 spectators. The parade itself will have 4,000 participants and 12 marching bands. The kids are going to have so much fun. They'll march 1.5 miles, and we will all be able to watch via the YouTube channel that they have. So the whole community will be able to be proud of their band that's over there in Ireland.
Fastest five minutes in the entire world! So, yeah, what sort of questions can we answer?
So if it was the fastest five minutes, it must have been you were really having fun, so.
Yeah! Of course!
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Former band member, Kevin.
Who marches!
I'm one of those state champions, by the way. I still have my gold medal.
A legend.
In my own mind, sir, in my own mind. So my question is, obviously, you know, the ask is increased expenses because of the trip. Are you guys planning to making this just a one-time ask for extra funds as part of the trip, or is this a ongoing ask that you're anticipating?
Nope, this is just tied directly to the, to trying to pray the cost of sending the kids to Dublin.
Okay, and then my second question was, is the $46,625 seems oddly specific, so is there a reason, what is the reason behind that specific number?
It was the $30,000 from 10 years ago, adjusted for the number of kids in band and inflation.
Okay, all right.
She's amazing at numbers.
That sounds very logical.
I know, it sounds funny, but, yeah, we figured, you know, it'll just be something.
Thank you for that thoughtful answer, I appreciate it.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Band parent, both my kids went through the system, and I was on the band board, a concession team.
I recognize your name for sure.
My question is, you say $170 a concession per student, is the entire band going, or just varsity band, or?
It's optional, and we are guessing that about 275 students of the 400, we're almost to 400 this year, so we're guessing that about 275 students will go. That's what all of these numbers are based on.
Not even just for financial reasons, some kids, they already have plans to do something, or they don't have interest in going to Dublin, I don't know why, it sounds amazing, but, yeah, that's kind of what we're guessing. So that would be, yeah, $46,625 divided by 275.
So this, you've got two major trips coming this year. You have the Rose Bowl. Didn't I see that early on, or did I, was that from years ago?
No, it was in the past.
Yeah, I was there for that, too.
Yeah.
You know that you were there for everything.
Unless Mrs. Shellsworth knows something we don't, but.
So I take it this is going to be your major trip for the year?
Correct, yes. I mean, for really, like, probably seven years. They don't do this every year.
Well, I think it was about 10 years ago. I'm a band parent too, but my kids were almost his age, so, you know, it is a few years ago. How did you pick Ireland to go to?
We were invited.
Yeah, they picked us.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a big honor, they basically kind of look around and say, okay, who looks amazing?
Yeah.
They talk to hell.
Okay, that was easy. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, appreciate your time. I didn't give you my spiel at the beginning, but you will be notified by the Finance Department before, after our budget is finalized on the decision on whether the funding was granted or not.
Okay, great, so, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I was going to tell them t-shirts would help, but that would probably bribe you or something like that. Okay, next up is from Denton County Mental Health and Mental Retardation with Pam Gutierrez. And what's that?
You should go over the band trip, tell me.
I was thinking about it.
I know.
Pam, I'm sorry, I did not realize you were sitting there so patiently and quietly, so thank you for being with us. You've heard my spiel, so I'll let you get to your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Council and city staff, I appreciate it. So in your packet, you will see our center of background and history, and first of all, I'm Pam Gutierrez, and I'm the Executive Director of Denton County MH Mars Center. And I'm not going to go through a lot of the slides because I have five minutes, and I'm not near as entertaining as your last group. And I also want to give a plug to Carson's Village, they are incredible, we work with them, and their parts are amazing. You'll hear about our loss team, and it's very similar to Carson's Village. So let me tell you a little bit about Denton County MH Mars Center. So we were first founded in 1971, and it's when, if you'll remember back, individuals were discharged from state hospitals, and it was rampant. People were just turned out in the community, and that was from state hospitals, they had nowhere to go. So community centers were founded, and that was not a good thing because people had been in state hospitals for years and years. And you can imagine, if you've been in state hospital for 20-plus years, and you're institutionalized, you don't know what to do, and all of a sudden, you're out in the community. So community centers were established. We're a community center, we're the local mental health authority and local IBD, Individuals with Developmental Disabilities Authority as well. So we're a community center, people come to us for services, and we're called the LITA because we have abbreviations for everything under the sign. In the early 90s, in Denton, Lewisville, and on McKinney Street, our services were established. We have Child and Adolescent Services and Adult Services. We also have Housing and Urban Development Services, which are housing services. It is impossible, I'll tell you, to find housing services for individuals. However, we do have some housing services. We provide three different services, and it's, we provide services for 67 individuals and three families. There's always a waiting list for those services, as you can imagine. And right now, with the programs closing, because of our political climate, we are scared every day that those programs will close. So we're all kind of on pins and needles with those services. In 2007, our crisis program was redesigned, and we got money to provide crisis services. What that means for you all, we have mobile crisis outreach services, and we'll go anywhere in Denton County, and we'll provide services to people that need those services. So if you have someone that's needing services in their home, you call our crisis hotline, and we will actually come to you and provide those services. So that's a very unique service. Or if you want to bring them to us, we have a crisis psychiatric triage center, and you all can bring your loved ones to us, and we'll provide those services at our psychiatric triage center. Then moving on, we develop peer-to-peer veteran services because we have a lot of veterans that need our services as well. And that also established our Veterans, Veteran County, excuse me, Veterans Court. So that's an additional service that's very needed in our county. Then moving on, 2015, our local suicide outreach to suicide survivors, which is very similar to Carson's Village, we go out, the medical examiner notifies us of a suicide, we go out and provide installation of hope to families that have no hope. This is a team that is like no other, very similar to Carson's Village, except we partner with the medical examiner, and then we go on scene, and we provide that hope for those families and individuals. And then continued growth over the last decade, we have a guardianship program that we partner with the county and the probate court, and we provide guardianship services. In 2019, we established a first episode psychosis program. So you can imagine being a student, University of North Texas, all of a sudden, you have a psychotic episode, you have no idea what to do, your family has no idea what to do. They call us, and we can stop that suicidal and psychotic episode through medication, medication management, and that program is for individuals that are 15 to 30. It's a remarkable program, and get them back on track, get them back to school. I've seen unbelievable things with this program. Then moving on, with the assistance of the Lewisville City Council, we had a co-care team, unfortunately, that grant wasn't renewed, but that grant is something that Capel really needs to consider. A licensed professional in the healing art goes out with an officer, and they go on mental health calls. That was a remarkable team that went out, and it saved many, many lives. My time is up. Thank you.
You can conclude your.
Okay, thank you. So we served 94 individuals with Capel. We are deeply discounting those services, we are charging $100 per service, it costs us $2,200 per service, but we want to provide the services for your individuals. That is outpatient services, seeing a psychiatrist, our crisis triage, as I spoke of, then ongoing crisis services, case management services, you have individuals that use our Child and Adolescent Services, and our individuals with developmental disabilities. Questions? Yes, sir.
So the, just a quick clarification, so do you only serve Denton County? I mean, obviously, we have a small part of Capel that's in Denton County, do you only serve Denton County area, or do you, is it Denton County and surrounding areas?
So anyone that comes into crisis, we have to serve everyone that comes into crisis. Yes, sir.
All right, excellent. And you said, you're, you said it kind of fast, how many Capel residents were you, did you provide services to?
94.
Is that over the last?
Over the last year.
Over the last year, okay. All right, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't know. You heard my spiel about that you'll be notified by our accounting or finance department at the end of our budget year, which will be probably in August sometime on our decision. Okay.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you very much for coming all the way down to Capel.
I'm honored to be here. Thank you. If there's any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
All right. And I apologize for my earlier mistake, but our last and final presentation is from the Capel Historical Museum. It's Chris Long. Thank you, Chris, for being patient with us tonight.
No, not at all. It was very interesting.
No one in your family's ever sat through this before, I'm sure.
No, not at all. I don't have a slide. I couldn't make a good figure.
And while you're getting set up, our condolences to your family.
Thank you very much. I think I need to go to Parsons Village. Okay. I'll get him some. All right. I don't have a slide because it won't go through your server. I tried to get it through your server, but I was out of town, so there was not really anything I could do about it, but we'll get that. Okay, so the historical museum started four years ago. When we started, the year before, the museum, it was open on Saturdays, one day a month. They'd had 58 visitors in a year. So that's where we started. Last year, we had 9,000 people, a little over 9,000 people come through our museum with events and with tours and all of that. Now, that is 9,000 people that we got into Old Town that wouldn't have been there without the museum. So I'm very proud of that. Last year, the reason for the increase is we have, we have reached out to schools and we have a lot of schools coming by. That includes Capel, of course. Unfortunately, Pinkerton always walk down and, you know, they won't be able to walk down anymore. But we also have the Ivy Program from the high school that comes by. We have Wilson Elementary that comes by. And then we had junior colleges reach out to us this year. And so we've had buses of people from junior colleges, which is very odd, but anyway, interesting. We also have groups from adult homes who have adults that have disabilities and so we accommodated them. And so the numbers just kept going. And of course, we added the Latino Festival and we added a couple of other festivals that really worked. The other thing we do every week is that we provide snow cones every week, thanks to Mike Lynn. We can do that. And we've been getting between 1,500 and 100 people every Saturday because we put it out on the road and we made these great signs. So snow cones Saturday has become a big deal in Old Town. The financial, the reason we're asking for money is that we had applied for six grants for this year. I had been dealing with the Texas Historical Commission, felt like we were going to get at least part of those grants and we would have been fine. With the political situation that we're in, they don't know if they're going to receive funding and so all of the grants have been pushed off. I don't know if they'll go away or if they'll go forward at this point because they don't know if they're getting the money. And there's really not much I can do about that. They just don't know at this point. So we will keep looking at that, but I'm a little concerned at this point because that is an unknown and it's a bad situation with grants and arts and y'all know that. The funding last year, we got $50,000 and we built a storage building and the storage building is quite something. It's a tough shed and the city came out and told us they wanted a foundation on it, so we had to work through that. And so it just now got finished because of all the red tape that surrounds that kind of thing. And then we had to paint it and then of course put the foundation in and then we had to... The good news is that a man on our board is a retired engineer and so he has, he has made this just a really great building. I said if it had been me, we would have had one of those rubber sheds out there, you know, when the wind blew it, it probably blown it away. So we really did use your money wisely and it's really quite special. The rest of the money went to events. We've got some sprinklers that we haven't put in yet because we couldn't put the sprinklers in because we needed to put the shed in and the shed just got in. And then we have a project going for landscaping over between the Wilson House and the Infield House and what we are calling the Wilson Garden. And once that is finished, we will get the sprinklers in. So that's kind of how that went. So that's where we are. The museum, we have one employee that works almost full-time. The rest of the people are either very part-time or they are interns. And one of our interns actually changed his major in college to museums and he has just been a wealth of just really great ideas and going forward. So we've also are putting a television in the store so that it will run, thank you, it will run things about the park and about Capel. And one of the things we do, just so you know, when these 9,000 people are in there, we hand them brochures about Capel that are printed by the chamber and we make sure they understand to go over to Dana's shop and shop and go to the diner and eat. And so we do direct a lot of traffic to the businesses downtown with those 9,000 people. So we're very proud of the 9,000 people this year in Old Town. We feel like we've done a really good job. All right, that's what I have. What can I tell you?
Any questions?
Chris, thank you for the details. Question for you is, how much grant did we get from the state last year?
Last year, we started applying for the grants and so they got cut off. They were in, we had enough money to go through the year and so we started applying for grants for this year. And we thought we were, like I said, I'm in contact with them and we're talking about, you know, how it's going and everything. And then it just shut off. I mean, I don't know what to do about that.
I was under the impression when we started the museum, you would get grant from the state and city doesn't have to contribute anything after a couple of years.
And you know, y'all don't have to. And if we run out of money, we'll shut it down. And I mean, you know, that's always a possibility. And when I said I thought we could fund it with grants, I meant that. But what's happened this year, which is when we needed the money because we were okay, we still have money, so we're okay through, oh, about, you know, almost 2026. Then we realized that we weren't going to get, we don't know if we're going to get the grants, that the grants were not forthcoming in the timeframe in which we thought they were. And I don't really know what to do about that, Viju. I think that, I understand if the city doesn't want to fund it. I totally get it. The city can run it. I mean, y'all can, you know, direct the 9,000 people down to Old Town, which I think is kind of what we all want, is we all want those people in Old Town. But the grant situation, I, you know, did I misjudge it? Yeah, I guess I did. Because I had no idea when the political thing came in that the art grants were going to really go away or at least maybe go away. Nobody knew.
Jim?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So in 2023, you received 107,000 and change from the city and then the next year, 117,000. Then last year, you only, you only had 50,000, correct?
Correct. And it was for a specific project.
So if you were to take the 50,000 from last year and the 130 you're asking for this year, that's 180, average across a two-year period, you're at 90,000 per period. That's still roughly 20,000 less than you received the two preceding years.
Correct. We have cut our expenses. We have, one of the things the building has allowed us to do is that we don't rebuy things, okay? And we now have, like for events, we have most of the things we need to put on again, so you don't have to go buy them again. So the costs are going down.
Thank you, Chris.
We're frugal. We got donated Christmas trees. We're very excited.
Ramesh, was that a question or just a?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, thank you for the presentation. Just 130,000 you're asking. Can you tell us the big rocks? What are you planning to spend this money on?
Some of it is operations. Part of it is that I need a, well, we need a, certain things in the park that we don't have right now. And I know this is going to sound strange, but we want a train and we know where a train is and we're going to go get the train if we can. And it will sit over beside the storage building because Capel has a very strong history of the railroad and that's actually how we got our name. And so we want to be able to showcase that. We also want to, we've asked Pinkerton to let us have some of their memorabilia, like their sign and that kind of thing. If we get that, then we're going to build, like we've got steps out in the middle of the field, which is kind of a replacement of the old schoolhouse. Well, if we can get the Pinkerton, then we will, we will put the Pinkerton exhibit out there. We will also have some of the buildings. I have talked to the head of the PTO. I don't know if I have those initials right. It used to be PTA. I think it's PTO now. And she has asked if we could do a Pinkerton Day every year like they do at the school. They have like an anniversary. We'll be doing that. So we're upgrading exhibits all the time. We've upgraded the exhibit already in the Infield House so that we have some room to put some rotating exhibits in there. We, the store is very different now. If you went in, you would be surprised at all the work that's been done in there, including a display for the minnards because even though it said minnards and we had some minyard stuff, we really didn't have. So, you know, you go buy frames and you buy whatever. So there's a lot of exhibits that need to go into the park to make it, to make people come back again. And we're getting so much traffic from outside Capel and we're working also with Grapevine historical people because they have great ideas too, to make sure that we make it a world-class place.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. I actually have two questions. The answer you gave to Ramesh intrigued me. Train, like a big train, a little train? What is that?
Big train. It's a pretty big train. And it'll be on a track and it's in a junkyard. But we know where it is and we know who will move it and it's not going to run anywhere. But then we'll put a display out there about how Capel got its name and, you know, all the history of the trains with Capel. We're very excited about it.
You're not going to make Cliff go get it, are you?
Oh, no. And actually, one of our interns, actually, one of our interns found the train, the one that's majoring in museums. And so what we're trying to do is when you go in the museum, it was always, it looked, and I don't mean this disrespectful to anyone, but it looked old and it looked, you know, kids don't love it. And so what we learned with getting these 9,000 people in there, that there were certain things we needed to do and we needed to engage children and we needed to, so we're having like dinosaur digs where you come dig for things. We're having snow cones. We're having hot dogs. We're having popcorn, you know, anything to get them in there. And I will tell you, one of the biggest draws, which is interesting to me, is that when we do Scare on the Square, which is a city event, we always get, I mean literally, at least 100 people come back after that event to tour. Because, you know, on Scare on the Square, they're doing it with the children, which by the way, is one of my favorite events. And so all of these things that we do have, you know, brought people in. Like the Latino Festival, we had tours in Spanish and English and we had everything printed in Spanish and English. And so that costs money when you're doing all that. So we continue to put things out there that we think will draw people in. You know, the goal is to tell them about Capitol history, but unfortunately, you have to make it fun to do.
So back to the train. How big is this train? Where I want to get here. I mean, is it like six feet long?
It's probably six feet long. And we get the track with it. So it'll sit on the track. It won't move. And then we will start trying to put the history together because, you know, that's how Capel got its name.
Absolutely.
And, you know, Mr. Capel never actually came to Capel. He was never in Capel. And so I think we need some, you know, it was gift station. It was, and all of that I think needs to be displayed. Well, we started talking about it and this intern does, I know where a train is. And I'm like, what are you talking about? He's like, a train. I need a train. And so it's really the interns that are driving a lot of this. I mean, I say no to a lot of things, but the creativity of these students, and one of them is from New Tech and I just love everything she does. And they are incredibly creative. And so we try to do as much as we can do with them, you know, if it's reasonable. And the train's kind of reasonable.
Okay, all right. Because it was a 12-foot train to wait to be.
It's not a 12-foot train.
The second thing is you mentioned people coming from outside of Capel. Are you tracking stats to local people versus?
As a matter of fact, 40%, around 40%, it's really about 41, 42, of the 9,000 were Capel people and the other ones were outside. And one of the things we did was we start, we put out all of these flyers to different private schools and whatever, in Dallas and Grapevine and whatever. So we're getting a lot more traffic than I would have thought we would from that. And so we're getting a lot of groups. I mean, if you look, when you pass the museum, you'll see buses in the parking lot. Well, I never saw a bus in the parking lot before. First time I saw it, I thought, they parked in our parking lot. Who is that? You know, it was actually people taking a tour.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. And again, you know, we continue because driving the traffic to Old Town, I think, is the point, is part of the point. And the other point is obviously telling people about the history of Capel. We also just say, you know, there's a lot of people that are from Capel that are in their 80s and 90s now and they are donating their memorabilia to the museum now. And so we have gotten a lot of really special things from people that have been around too, like the Lees, like Chief Lee. And, you know, it's so, it's really been interesting to go to their homes and look at their stuff and figure out exactly what we didn't know because they know everything. So we're also doing that.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Chris? Yes, Don?
Real quick, I didn't see in the information of balance sheet or financial statement or anything, but just curious, I know one of your big concerns has been make sure we can make this thing sustainable, you know, ongoing, you know, when you pass the baton and everything else. Is, have all the funds that have been contributed, are they, have they all been used? Are we, are you accumulating a working capital or a fund balance or is anything or is there any plan to?
We are working on getting a fund balance. Okay. I had thought, you know, you shouldn't think. I had thought once these grants came in, because of the type of grants that we apply for, that we could do a better job with that balance, but we will do a better job this year. I don't know what we're going to do yet, but we're going to do it.
So most of the, most of the funds that have been given over time have been depleted or used?
Yes, we're still okay, but yes. And that's partially because we keep expanding things at the museum. And I am very aware that we need to turn that, you know, and put that capital in there.
Sure. Okay. Just curious. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cliff, thanks for your patience.
He wants dinner.
All right.
Dinner right there.
You got your priorities right, Cliff.
Does anybody need a break or y'all okay to continue on?
I do need a break, but if we can continue on, I can just...
I'm taking a break right now.
All right. So one of the things I do want to do before we get out of here tonight is to come back and discuss the charitable organizations and come to a consensus so that staff will have some idea of what to do. But let's let Jerry go ahead and give his presentation, item number four, on the water and sewer budget. And then we'll come back to the charitable organizations after he completes. Yes, Jim?
Would we want to have the citizens' appearance before that?
No, the citizens' appearance comes right at the end.
Oh, definitely.
Jerry, when you start, paste the page number so we can follow along with you.
Yes, sir. It begins on page 24. Yes, page 24 is going to be the start.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jerry Young and tonight I'm excited to be presenting the Water Sewer Fund to you this evening. Just for a brief agenda, so now we're going to begin with some commentary on the Water Sewer Fund and then we're going to touch on the guiding principles as well as some initiatives that have impacted the Water Sewer Fund. And then we will close out by looking at the projected fiscal year 2026 budget. So for the commentary, first, the Water Sewer Fund is the one and only enterprise fund within the city of Capel, which means that the revenue generated must cover the full cost of providing the service. The cost of providing the service includes charges from Dallas Water Utility, who charge or who provide the city with drinking water, and then Trinity River Authority, who treat our wastewater. So in addition, there are annual operating and maintenance costs, which include salaries, supplies, maintaining and operating... which include salaries, supplies, maintaining and operating costs. And, I'm sorry, maintaining and repairing both the water and sewer systems. So you can think about the pump station, the lift station, water towers, as well as any equipment that's used to service the system. So the revenue of the fund should cover any capital costs related to the water sewer system, including infrastructure maintenance, repairs, or to even expand the system. All these costs are covered by water and sewer revenue, which are generated by the water and sewer rates approved by council. The Water and Sewer Fund does not receive any revenue from property tax or sales tax. So for the guiding principles, first being water sustainability and conservation. As a city, we feel it's our duty to recognize water as the finite resource that it is. So with that, we want to ensure we have sustainable practices and that goes hand in hand with conservation. For the long-term financial and capital planning, we feel to be good stewards of the city's finances. We need to consider the long-term impact of upcoming projects as well as recognizing any trends that we're seeing with the water and sewer, with water and sewer in the future. And finally, the customer experience. As an enterprise fund, we are reliant on customers. So we need to consider their experience as we implement new projects. And that's the reason why we like to implement things one at a time, to give customers the opportunity to adjust. So with that, it leads me into some of the projects that we've completed. So in 2015 is where we feel our journey really began. And we completed a rate study and a business plan. And from there, we raised rates each year from 2015 through 2019. In 2019, we began work on the Advanced Water Meter Project. And this brought all the city meters to one meter tight. And we wanted to allow customers the opportunity to adjust to the accuracy of the new meters. So as a result, we did not increase rates in 2020. And in 2021, we implemented a tiered rate structure that impacted the volumetric side of water charges. In 2022, utility billing received new software. So we didn't want to increase rates while they were learning a new system. And from there, we began work to have winter averaging implemented by 2023. And during that same time period, we also conducted a rate study. And we brought forth the first rate increase in a few years in 2024. And finally, this summer, we have moved to a mandatory watering schedule of two days a week, which brings us to present day. And I will begin by talking you through the proposed 2026 revenues. On page 25, I'm going to be referencing the graphs. So to begin with the water sales, for the adopted year, we are on pace to meet our budgeted revenue amount of 15.9 million for the current year. And for the proposed year, we are anticipating a slight decrease in revenue just due to our conservation efforts as a city and people having a full year under the rates. So we are reflecting that as a slight decrease to the 15.97 million that you're seeing. And for sewer sales, it's a similar train of thought. For the adopted year, we are on pace to reach the 7.3 million. And as our conservation effort continues, citizens adjust, having a full year under the rates, as well as customers being able to take full advantage of winter averaging, we're anticipating a slight dip to 6.9 million for sewer sales. So with that, that covers 97% of the revenue for the Water and Sewer Fund. So I'm going to move to the expenditures for the system, or for the fund rather. And you can reference it on page 26. Yes, thank you. So to begin with the services, which is a great portion of the chart. At 20.3 million, we see an increase from the previous year by about 15% or 2.7 million for the proposed year. And these expenditures are increasing primarily due to us receiving information from Dallas Water Utility and TRA that their rates are going to be increasing more than the rate study anticipated. So as a result, these are the budgeted figures and they're an early estimation of their rates. This budget is going to be updated once we receive information from both of those entities about their rates. And we'll be back in front of you during the final budget workshop in July. And so moving to the salary and benefits portion, which is the navy sliver of the pie chart, this increase reflects a transfer of three employees from the general fund, which is a part of the Public Works Streets Department, to the Water Sewer Fund. And these positions were moved because their work primarily supports water and sewer line maintenance, line components of street maintenance. So as a result, the Water and Sewer Fund's FTE count is increasing from 6.5 to 19.5. So the general fund Public Works Street Department FTE count was lowered as a result. The Water Sewer Fund staffing also includes utility billing, utility operations, as well as half the cost of a Public Works Assistant Director.
It's moving from 16.5 to 19.5.
Yes, 16, sorry. Which brings the total expenditures for the proposed year to 25.7 million. And just to reiterate, this budget is built off early estimations from DWU and TRA. We don't have their final numbers just yet, but we will be back in front of you to present at the end of July. So with that, I will open it up for any questions for the Water Sewer Fund.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, thanks for the presentation. Looking at the FY '26 proposed budget and comparing the revenues to expense, I see a shortfall of about $1.851 million. Is that normal? How do we plan to fill the gap?
So we, we want to wait until we get the rates in from DWU and TRA to see what their final numbers are going to be. Because we feel like that may reduce the budgeted amounts, which would result in that gap closing. And from there, we will be in front of you in November or December if we feel like a rate increase is needed.
Thank you.
Mark?
I have a question about the interest income going up 200,000. Where we were talking about the interest income on the other fund actually dropping because of the interest rate impact.
So this one, we, we thought that the, that what was budgeted was a little low last year. And so looking at what we've actually been bringing in, we decided to, we were looking at all of them. We should have lowered it, but we think it was a little understated last year. And looking at what's the fund balance and what the revenue is coming in, we adjusted it.
Okay. Yeah, just to your point. Part of what we've done also, knowing that we're going to get further information, as soon as we get through June, July, and August in particular, and let's say we're extremely successful and our residents really do conserve their water consumption, then we don't have to take the 19.5 million. This is built on us taking the 19.5 million. Remember, it's a lag as far as, as the information flows, when the rates flow, as far as the way that we present. So we're ahead right now of where we'll know for sure in September how was our water decision. So the rate analysis will take our back into it. So this is a really more of a flex number for us right now. Because we don't, we don't know how our residents are going to do in July and August.
So keep in mind also, last summer was our first voluntary period. It was also a relatively mild summer. So there's a lot of variables at play here.
I have a two-part question. For the Water and Sewer Fund, just like other funds, is there a fund balance over the past few years? Is that in any of the pages you provided?
So there's a retained earnings for the Water and Sewer Fund because it's an enterprise fund, so it's not exactly a fund balance. We, we have it, if you'd like to take a look, but just want to keep in mind that it's early estimations, so the numbers.
Can you talk about the policy with that?
Yes, so the policy for retained earnings is that we have 180 days worth of expenditures for the Water and Sewer Fund. So we just take whatever our projected expenditures are and divide it by the days in the year. And then from there, we need to keep.
So it will be a half of 25 million dollars. It will be half of about 25 million dollars, 2.5 million dollars.
Actually, retained earnings is a lot higher. I think, Kevin, you told me it's about 204 days right now.
Yes. So it's projected to be at the end of 9/30 of 2025, 204 days.
I have another, different topic, and this is more a philosophical one. So we are trying to stay under the 19.5 million gallons per day, correct?
We're trying to stay around 18 and a half million.
18 and a half million. So let's say we achieve that. So what I'm seeing is our revenue and cost is going to be stable, let's say it's 18.5. But over time, our maintenance costs are going to be increasing, right? So do we see a problem with that, with the revenues being kind of capped off at 18.5, but the maintenance costs going up?
There's more to that equation. So the 18.5 gets into the issue of our fixed costs because it's a take-or-pay contract, right? Plus the volume.
Yes.
They are also increasing our cost of water and our cost of sewer. So when Jerry mentioned back in 2015, we hadn't increased our rates and we did the rate study, that's because for the previous almost 10 to 15 years, the rates were increasing being charged by Dallas Water Utilities and TRA, but the city was never passing those costs on to the residents. So in this instance, the philosophy so far has been that, or the intent was, and we did follow that through about 2019, I believe, if that's right, that the council was in essence raising the rate comparative to what the TW. TW. DW, Dallas Water Utilities and TRA were charging. So not to get into too much detail, but along the way, there was a spike in the sewage that was throwing off our sewage costs. And we finally got that repaired, which brought our sewage costs back down. So we've been very sensitive to bringing y'all any type of rate increase. There was also along the ways related to capital, a lot of that capital, because of the scale of it, is more debt-oriented because it's long-term. And so built into the business plan and the rate study is when we issue debt. So in the plan, there is capital investment that is being identified. Some may require debt, some may not require debt. All that gets taken into account in the rate study that's presented to you in November, December. I know that is probably not what we wanted, but.
I think, I think kind of answers my question. Maybe go back and reformulate.
Okay.
But I'm good for now, thank you.
From a budgetary standpoint, from where we are right now, yes, it is showing as a deficit. It's showing as a deficit because of two primary reasons. 19.5, what's that take? And the rate increase. Those are the primary reasons. Until we actually experience those, though, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to directly translate into a rate increase to make up that 1.8 or 2 million dollars which you identified.
And the retained earnings is shown at the bottom of the Water and Sewer Financial Statement that we prepare for you every month. So those, I think, we give you the general fund every month, we give you water sewer, CCPD, IMF. They all have, at the bottom of the financial statement, it's a little walkboard of fund balance so that you can see where it's at and what's in it, if we have anything assigned.
Good, thank you.
Jerry, could you go back to like your slide number one or two, where you were talking about the, this one? So you left off the important stuff for me, which is what comes down at the bottom after the mandatory watering schedule. Where are we going next?
Well, next, we will be in front of you if we need to increase rates around November or December.
Okay. Any, maybe I'm, maybe this is a discussion for another time, but I was really looking for the next phase of our water plan.
The water, what your team is, the committee has been working on, what are the next steps? And I'm not sure that we're ready to discuss that. I think Public Works probably needs to be the one to get in front of you for that because they're leading that whole discussion. What we're doing, like, are we enforcing the water conservation? We're doing a lot of education.
You're the facilitators.
What does that look like?
Okay. I'll put my question off to later. I just came back from a conference where they were talking about all this stuff. So I was listening to this for three days, so anyway.
I'll be prepared to speak on it at the final workshop.
Okay. I'm going to hold you to it then.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your patience for waiting on us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to go back to our charitable organizations list real quickly and just see if anybody's got any knee-jerk reactions to any of the requests or comments or anything that we can follow up on. First of all, for all of the, all of the, all of the charitable organizations that did not present, those met all of the criteria that our subcommittee laid out, we're not presenting. Does anybody have a problem with any of the requests that were laid out? Okay, so this is, this will show up in the budget later this, in July and August. So seeing no, no concerns on, on the charitable organizations there. Let's go to the ones that, that talked about, that we saw tonight. I just want to make sure that we are all in agreement with those. I'm going to start at the top of the list here. I've got Carson's Village at $3,700. Anybody have a problem with that?
Just a comment, a common theme between Carson's Village and the HMR Center, they're clearly not very good at selling, but, but what they're doing is really admirable, so.
So I think that, I think I learned something. I think they were all a little bit time-constrained tonight with five minutes. So we may see a little bit longer time allotment next year. So I, because I think they, some of them could have clearly done a more thorough job. Some of them had a lot of information to convey. So I'll, I'll take that one for the team. Carson's is okay. The next one I have is the Chamber of Commerce at 64,740. Mark?
And that's financed out all out of the hot taxes, right?
Chamber of Commerce?
It's a general fund.
That's the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes.
What you're thinking is the. And that's a totally different request. So you'll get later.
Okay. So, general fund, yes.
Because they're not sure.
Oh, that's right. That was the increase.
It's a good, good point, so.
So that number's not in here, right?
They, they sent through the amended request like Thursday or Friday. So that's why your, what's in your packet doesn't.
Okay, I'm sorry. So what's in the number?
64,740.
If I could.
It's about a 50% increase, which would still fit within the criteria for not having a presentation.
Yeah. I could give a little bit of color on the, the Chamber of Commerce. So they, a couple months ago, they had a membership event where they were trying to, you know, kind of get new members, drive some revenue and stuff like that. You know, obviously, you heard Robyn, she's just kind of hitting the 60-day mark. So I think that there was a lot of, due to the transition and things like that, I, I don't think that that event was as successful as the chamber was, was hoping for. You know, from speaking to the gentlemen that hope, that kind of, that they bring in to host that kind of event, they really like to work with more established CEOs, you know. they really like to work with more established CEOs, you know, that, you know, are, are really kind of dug into the community and, and stuff. So, with that transition, with Ellie going out and stuff, it just, I think some people were hesitant, you know, they're, you know, they're not sure about like, who's this new person, you know, like, what's that's going on, so. Um, plus with Ellie transitioning out, I know that, um, they weren't actually a hundred percent, like, firing on all cylinders. So, uh, the chamber has, has had a couple of months where it, it hasn't been as smooth. I mean, and, and you gotta see it here, like, with the other ask and stuff, you know, people having funding concerns and stuff like that, so. I think that the ask, the additional ask that they're asking for is reasonable considering all those, those other, um, you know, basically the, uh, the challenges that they have faced at the beginning of the year, so. I would be in favor of doing, and just speaking candidly, I, I mean, I don't know if anybody, they specifically asked for that amount, but, um, I know that things have been a little bit lean for them recently, so, love to help them out as much as possible.
Brianna?
And, and so I guess I wanted to just, I, I completely agree, I just wanted to know if that, if you see that as a one-time ask, or do you see that amount potentially going forward? And I know they're not here to necessarily answer that question, but I know you're pretty.
Yeah, I'm, and, yeah, full disclosure, I'm, I'm very tight with the chamber, I'm a business member of the chamber, so, not trying to, like, hide that or anything, but, um, i- it's my understanding is that the additional cost was just kind of lack, a, a little bit lack of performance from earlier in the year. I don't think that that's an ongoing ask increase, it's just more of like
Just to get them.
What they need to kind of bridge the gap from a couple lean months earlier in the year, and, um, so, you know.
That's.
That is my understanding.
That's true.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I wanted to, um, reflect or actually mirror what Kevin said. I'm also a member of the chamber and, uh, been associated with them for a long time. Uh, I think the chamber does good work for Capel, and then some of the sales tax revenue that we are benefiting, I won't say it's exactly because of the Chamber of Commerce, but I think they don't hinder, uh, that portion of the revenue coming to us. And if there is anything that we can do to partner with the chamber to help strengthen that pipeline of sales tax dollars, I think, I think we should, uh, look into that, and that would mean investing in the Chamber of Commerce with the sixty-four thousand they're asking. Um, so, I'm in support of that.
I don't see any shaking of the head, so we can take that one as an okay? All right, let's move on.
I too am a member.
Uh, the high school band booster club, sixty-four, forty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-five.
Glasses came off.
Yeah, no, I'm looking, I'm looking at Mark to start. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, it has been ten years since they made the ask, uh, the last time.
You know what our big concern back then was? Do you remember?
Um.
That it was gonna become an every-year thing?
Yeah, yeah, and it didn't.
No, it didn't.
So, it's good.
And I would say that's why I specifically asked the question, if it was tied into just this trip or if it was gonna be an ongoing, so.
I mean, I look at it, I, I'm gonna give you my opinion. Um, if we can talk to them and, you know, put the name out Capel as much as they can in Ireland, uh, I don't know that we'll get too many Irish moving into town, but, you know, it doesn't hurt. Um, I just look at it as a great publicity for the city. Yeah, I know that the, the parade that you went to, what was that little one in, in, uh?
In Pasadena?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, the Rose Bowl.
Oh, that one, yeah. You know, they're still talking about that, so, that was phenomenal. That was what, twenty-five years ago?
Yes.
Nineteen ninety?
No, whoa.
Two thousand.
Whoa, easy.
Two thousand.
Yeah, it was, uh, that New Year's of, uh, two thousand, two thousand and one.
Wow. I, I don't know, Mark, I, I'm a band supporter, so I can't say too much. Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, again, I'm going to pile on, I, I'm a band supporter. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I think these kids are forever going to remember that experience, and we are seeing the trend of several of them moving back to Capel. Uh, so I, I think it's a fantastic investment for the next generation who may come back and, uh, serve the city.
You know, I would like to make a request to them. Remember, um, in past, you know, Christmas parades, they used to do like a medley of Christmas songs? In the past year or two, they've just done fight songs that they already knew from.
Mark, that's very easy. And, yes, that's very easy.
And I just thought it added so much to the parade.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's such a small thing, and, you know, we always highlighted them, that, and that was part of the reason we, we're like, you know, they participate in the, you know, in the parade, and I was like, kind of disappointed.
You wanna take that one?
Sure, I, I, I'm happy to, uh, to suggest to them that they march.
Okay, and I'll, and I'll take the music side on.
There's nothing like a bunch of Christmas fight songs. They really get you in the mood for the season, you know?
So, I know why they do what they do, because the, the, they don't practice any of that stuff.
It's easy.
It, yeah, it's not hard.
They're very talented musicians.
Yes.
They are, exactly, then, it doesn't, it's not a hard ask.
All right, um, I'm gonna move on, the Denton County MHMR, eighteen hundred, out of a thirty-nine thousand dollar service to the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was actually surprised with the amount of residents they serve, so I'm, yeah, I'm good with that.
And how small the ask is.
Yeah, agreed with you.
I will venture, you can up the ask if you want to.
I mean, I think they're good.
All right, we'll move on, last one, Capel Historical Museum, a hundred and thirty thousand. What's that?
This is out of hot.
Yes, the one on the hot tax.
This is out of hot tax. But you seem to have a surplus of.
For, for that reason alone, I'd say yes.
I was, I was surprised at the number of visitors that she's claiming, I had no idea that they were getting nine thousand a year. That's, that's a, that's as many as the, uh, Life Safety Park, well, roughly the Life Safety Park and the Biodiversity Center get.
Well, I mean, last year is so relatively smaller, that it's still less than what they've gotten each year, so I, if you average it two years together, it doesn't bother me.
But she canceled the car show this year.
Well, I know that, that could be upsetting to some.
I'm sure she, she'll change that.
I did want to point out something that Bijou was kind of referencing earlier in that conversation was, the initial ask, when they came, was a two-year ask. And it was a, you know, it was a, hey, we need a couple of years, we need to ramp up, we, we got this grant writing thing, stuff like that, so I, Bijou, I believe that that's kind of what you were, were alluding to, is that, is that correct, sir?
Yeah.
And so, then, last year, we had, the original ask wasn't fifty thousand, it was, it was something much larger, and then they kind of last minute reduced it down to fifty thousand, I, I remember that, that narrative, and so, now it's kind of back up, so, um, I, I guess, I, I think the, the thing is, is like, initially, when we were first presented with supporting the historical museum, there was kind of this two-year, like, hey, we need some runway, we need, we need to take off, and then, now it's kind of been like a, a continuous stream of, of ask, and so I, I would like to maybe have a deeper conversation about, like, it's almost like, hey, what, what are we gonna, how much are they gonna ask every year for, and I would love to have a little bit more deeper understanding conversation. If they're gonna have a consistent ask, like, what that looks like and settle that in, because I think my expectation was, it was gonna be two years. And now that circum, that, that expectation has now changed for now four years in a row. That's just kind of where I land on it, is, uh, I mean, the, the prospect of a six-foot train is interesting, but, uh, I mean, are, are they going and getting that train and setting up that exhibit just because they have the opportunity to, and do they need that? Like, is it just, is that always gonna be how it's, how it's gonna operate? Or are they gonna settle into a consistent operation? And kind of like what you were alluding to was, is there gonna be cut, like, steady cash flow or, or, you know, a, a balance that they're gonna kind of work from and stuff, so, I'm just kind of asking some questions out about, out loud about what the council thinks about this.
I, I think with, without grants, you know, they aren't gonna be able to, um, stay afloat. I mean, um, they'll, they'll, you know, scrape by with some donations here and there, um, but, uh, I think that we will probably have to continue to, uh, provide support, because they just really don't have a revenue stream.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, with the gutting of, um, these kind of grants that were available, um, you know, it definitely threw a monkey wrench into the whole master plan.
Mm-hmm.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, I, I appreciate the, that history that you gave, Kevin, and I think Bijou also mentioned last time, I was not aware that back in the day, it was a two-year thing. That said, uh, now, if, if I'm looking forward, um, if it's truly six thousand or nine thousand people coming in, sixty percent of them being, uh, out of Capel, and, uh, I, I would like to see some concrete numbers, like, when, when we talk about Discover Capel, we ask them to present numbers, uh, that are validated. So, I would like to, if you're going to say yes to this, I would want them to show us some concrete information that, yes, they are getting nine thousand, and prove to us that some of it is out of state. Uh, so, if, if that can be proved, then, then maybe I could do the leap of faith and say, some of them would be spending money in Capel and, and, and encouraging local businesses.
Bijou?
Yes, did I hear from the presentation that they never received any funding from the state?
I think so.
Yes, that's kind of what I.
That's what I heard, yeah.
They were trying.
I believe when they made the pitch initially, the first year, they would guaranteed get money from the state. So, it's been to four years, and I know it's been updated that we will not get a state that is museum.
Uh, can I just say? Uh, I'm not sure if the word was guaranteed, but maybe it was, uh, because there were, that first year, they were having to go through the application to become a museum. Once they became a museum, they had access to grant funds. Until they became a museum, they could not even access those grant funds. So, that, I think, that's a slight, but I'm not disagreeing with you in terms of, they made a commitment that they would be applying for the grants.
The wording that I remember was, like, they felt, Chris said she felt very strongly that, that there, there were grants out there and that she, that they would be available, like, I don't think she likes a guarantee, but, obviously, she reported to us that she tried, and then, you know, obviously, there's been some changes and stuff, I mean, that's what I remember.
And she also made a comment, um, we can turn over to the city, did I hear that?
She said that.
Yeah.
I didn't understand it.
Yeah.
No, I just want to make sure what I heard was right, that's why I'm asking that question.
Yeah.
Because we recorded, and I want to make sure that I heard it right.
I'm sorry?
It's our park.
Yeah, she's talking about from an operational standpoint, just turn it over to us. Yes, it's our property.
We own it, so she could do that.
And, does the city owns the land and all the houses?
Oh, yes.
I'm just kind of, just putting that out there, that, that is, that is all owned by the city.
The assets are ours, now they, some of the product in the vineyard house, that's what they've purchased, using the funds, but, uh.
We're gonna own a train.
Yeah.
No, in all.
We're getting a train.
In all seriousness, um, I heard the same thing, and so, I think you're right, Kevin, this is a bigger discussion. We need to understand if this is something that we're gonna have to take over and maintain, because the more that gets added, the more that gets done, like, for an example, a train, right? Like, what does that mean at some point? Are we gonna maintain it, are we gonna take it over, and maybe we are, but we just need to, or is it gonna be a hundred and thirty every year, right? Or will it, will there be any grants? Like, how do we continue, and we, it kind of goes back to what we did with, like, the Biodiversity Center, and at some point, they had to also do their share, and I think that's the expectation we had for the Historical Society, so, the bigger question is, you know, if we do a hundred and thirty now, what does that look like going forward? And if we continue, and if that's to bring in more assets, right, that's more that we will, that need to maintain going forward, which, again, could be fine, it's just a, it's a question of what do we want to do? Do we wanna?
It's a non-operational train.
And if, if they are, if they are investing, I would like to see a strategy, not just buy things piece by.
And I think that's what, I think that's what's missing in this project.
This is what I'm, I'm thinking as well, that that's what I would like to see, is like, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to the, the funding, it's just, I just want to know, like, what does the future look like? And if, if the Historical Society and the museum is going to look to us to fund it, just an expectation that, that that's what it's gonna be like moving forward is what I would like to see and understand, that's just my, my comment on that.
Yeah?
Yeah, so, if we approve this, we will put about four hundred thousand dollars into that.
Mm-hmm.
We talk about the importance of bringing people into Old Town, she's saying she's brought about nine thousand people into Old Town. Um, but then I look at organizationally, set aside that the assets are city property, there's an organization there that's, the, the historical staff that she has and the interns like that, but, what does that look like five years hence, right? I mean, what does that look like ten years hence? And so, we've already got four hundred thousand dollars invested into the place, it's, it's really neat. I mean, it's, and what they've done with it has certainly improved what was there since, you know, they started kind of managing it and running it. But, and I do think there's some value to attracting people into Old Town that look around and think, oh, well, let's go get a burger at Twisted Groot or whatever, and so, I think there's a lot of value there, but I, I'm less worried about, you know, ninety thousand over a two-year period, which is how that averages out, and more worried about or concerned about, so what, what are we doing five years out, what are we doing ten years out? What, what's going to happen to the investment we made? Because the idea of staffing it with city employees is just gonna exponentially increase our annual cost of operating it. So, is it, is it designed, is it being set up to run perpetually as a volunteer organization? Staffing it with non-paid interns that are?
No, they are paying interns.
Are those paid interns?
Yeah.
So, you know, with paid interns, um, is it, is that what we're trying to accomplish? I, I kind of feel like, to be fair, we put a lot of money into it, moved a lot of buildings over there, because they were, you know, historical, and we've done all that really without any kind of plan as to where are we heading, and who's driving the bus, or the train, I should say, to get us there. You know, be, I, I'm more concerned about making the investment that we've made count for something five years from now, ten years from now. Um, and I'd like to see just a discussion of a succession plan in terms of the organizational leadership, a staffing plan going forward, what do they really require? Um, you know, that sort of thing, just so we have a better sense, because if, you know, if, if, if it all comes to a close when Chris and, and Cliff, Cliff retire, and they're not going to do that anymore, well, that's very different from having a robust volunteer organization that's gonna take the mantle and, and run it and, and build on the investment we've made. So, that, that's really where I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned about a larger picture of where we're going as opposed to, you know, what, what they're asking us to do right now.
I'm sitting here trying to think if we have enough time to give Chris an opportunity to put a kind of a, a, a plan together, an organizational business plan, and come back before we actually have to make a decision.
I mean, those can take months to put together.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure we actually have time to do that.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Um, hang on, uh, Mark, Marshall's next, and then Don.
Yeah, you know, I believe Chris really had a plan, I mean, and, you know, this is a, something that's a labor of love for her, that she's devoting her time to, and quite honestly, you know, you know, you ever heard that, uh, quote by Mike Tyson, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the face?
I've heard of that.
Yeah. Um, and I think that's what happened, and I think she's trying to figure out how to regroup here. Because I, I don't think she's just, um, you know, making up numbers or, you know, inflating things, but I think that she wants to figure out a way that she can still make this thing go forward. Um, but you're right, there's no, nothing wrong with having kind of a long-term plan. Um, like you said, here she, you know, at one point, she's retired from this. Um, like you said, here she, you know, at one point she's gonna retire from this, and, and then what happens? So I think that's a valid question, but I don't think it could be answered between now and the time we have to make the decision.
Could, could we do something along the lines of, I don't know, I guess I would ask my answer.
Like, we can give you half now and half later once we get a strategic plan? Or, I don't know, I mean.
That's really, that's really y'all.
That's our decision.
Okay, well, they're, what do you want in the agreement? Yeah, right, right. And I don't know, I was just trying to figure out how, like, I hear you and, and, I mean, it is labor love. She's put a lot of time and effort. I think she has a plan, has had a plan, has ideas, there's a lot of things. I don't want to poo poo her ideas, but there's something we could do.
I was gonna tell you, you could do anything you want to. So what we could do is we could couch it as, you know, we're, we would, we realize that the, the, the disappearance of the grants or whatever you want to call it, cancellation or the deference or whatever you want to call it.
Lack thereof.
Non-viability.
Has happened, has happened very quickly and has, has definitely thrown her, whatever plan she had into a tailspin. So we could give her, you know, six months or pick a date to, to revise that, give her some funding upfront, and then do the rest of it as she came through with the plan. You could certainly do something like that.
I'd go ahead and fund it, and so we have budget certainty and she has budget certainty. But I'd, I'd, I'd try to work with them over the next twelve months to, to develop all the rest of the stuff. I mean, you know, it, she's really been put in a difficult spot with the lack of the grant funding coming in. And we've got a lot of money invested in the place and I don't want to just cut it off and close it up and then just have it collect dust over there.
It has been pointed out to me that I have ignored the mayor pro con twice now.
MPT.
So I think of, uh.
Yeah, phone over there.
Uh, I think of the, all the what ifs. So what if, what if they weren't there? I mean, Heritage Park would just be empty with, I mean, the city.
So, uh, Heritage, the Heritage Society, at ten thousand dollars a year, was every once in a while opening the vineyard, every once in a while opening the coconut house. Had a group of volunteers. That group of volunteers has gotten older. And the mayor, the museum came along at that point in time.
And so it took.
So when you ask the question about what was, this was the next iteration. You have, Chris has presented, to Bijou's point, Chris has presented, I'll call it a business plan, that was really reliant on obtaining the grants. That was the last time that you saw a presentation of this as it relates to a business plan. Um, and, you know, all this has happened in basically the last three months as far as the change of course because of the grant funding. It's not just her, it's every agency out there. Um, so they're all likely. Uh, observation, she's, you know, working hard with the interns and everything along those lines. Uh, succession planning is a weakness. And what will happen to it? It goes back to what philosophy do you want to have for Heritage Park as it relates to the overall strategy? We haven't laid out one because Heritage Museum and the Heritage Society has been in that front seat.
Yeah. So that's the what if is the, the city would have to do something?
If you were to ask us to pour energy into it, we would put our energy there. We have spent this much time.
Right. Well, you, you've made, you've made my point though, that, that the city would either, we would do nothing or the city would have to ramp up something.
Well, they.
Based on what we want done.
It's really what the council at that point wants done with Heritage Park.
So it hasn't gone for the museum like they thought. Uh, Mark hit on the right answer a while ago. This is coming out of the hot bucket. So that gives us, I think that gives us the runway to continue to move down this path. And I do agree with the succession plan and what's, what's, what's long-term, five years or whatever they think needs to happen or there needs to be more meat on that loan, but.
Can I offer this to you?
Sure.
Real quick? You could tell us, put a plan together and can Chris read that plan? Because right now, you've got Chris in a position of trying to do something, trying to grow, and she's scurrying as far as those resources. I mean, we could be in a partnership, but to your, all your point, beyond Chris, I do not know. In my conversations, what is out there after Chris is gone? I've, I've got a slightly different chip bent to that question. Could the city do what she's doing for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year? I have no idea. I, 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 I do not know what she's doing in the sense of how often is it operating? How many hours? What are the events? Um.
That would be good to know.
Yeah, and I, if city operators, the residents ask of how many hours it's open is going to explode. So I think it's going to be a very expensive proposition for us to have, uh, city staff run it because people are going to say, I want it from eight AM to eight PM.
At ten.
There's, there's, I mean, there's, there's something where top. And that's what they are trying to do. They're trying to do that.
It's a service and as you said, they're very passionate, there's a lot of love into it and all that. There's a financial issue that they have run up against. And the hot funds are a revenue source, to your point. And those funds are limited to that percentage. And part of the answer is you build the plan around what those hot funds get support. Kevin?
So could, would council be okay with moving forward to saying, we approve this, but with the string or the caveat that Chris comes back with us in a X time period and presents us with all the, and answers the questions that we've asked tonight?
I, I would like to take Mike up on his offer.
I would too.
I, I was going to say that.
Yeah, I don't think I want to put all this on Chris.
Yeah, I think, uh.
And, and now I'm not saying, I'm not saying what Kevin is saying is, is bad.
No.
I think what we need to do is absolutely ask her to come back with that. But I think we need to balance that with what Mike would come back with as well. Cause that comes back to what Bijou made the comment about, did he hear her say the city could take it? I guess is the way that she said that. And that was like, my ears perked up. It's like, well, that's the first time I've heard her say, um, okay.
She's gonna hand us the keys.
She's gonna hand us the keys. Right.
I know she's making a transition on the Heritage Park side to fill, uh, take over on the presidency. She's the president of that organization as well as the museum. So she's.
Yeah, you'll notice that they, right? We still never got a request out of Heritage Society, uh, society.
And the numbers, the membership is going down.
Small, small.
Very small. Um, in that organization as well. So we also have to look at that organization as well. How, how are we going to continue with that organization? Because the membership is very low there. The times that I attended.
May, may, uh, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. In support of what Kevin was saying and out of respect to Chris, um, I would like to suggest to, to that team that we would like a, a strategy from them. And if they would like, city can, can offer to help them put together the strategy. So we don't make it mandatory, but we make it optional. So if, if Chris thinks she has a bandwidth to put together a strategy, then we should give her the time.
And, okay, and what do you do with her funding requests at the same time?
I, I approve it from now.
Well, you're not approving it tonight, you're just setting aside because everybody in it for this budget process.
What do you say?
I just want to be clear.
Yes.
And, you know, that, that's exactly what I was gonna say, Rashid. I mean, I, I think if this, if we're gonna do anything, it needs to be a collaborative effort with her. You know, that we, we want to help, help you develop this, you know, and help fulfill your vision. And, you know, we have the, the manpower and the, the, the brain power and the time to devote to it. Because, you know, she, you know, as you, you know, she's, um, probably in her eighties now?
No, she's, she's, she's sixty-seven.
She is not.
Yes.
Yeah, she is.
Her birthday's January thirteenth.
Ah, okay.
Just her half is thirteen.
Um, but, yeah, I mean, it's a, but it's a lot of effort. I mean, to put together a plan by yourself, you know? So I, I think we ought to do it as.
Helper?
Yeah.
I think it's collaborative.
Okay, Jim?
I like that idea, but.
Mark, yeah, okay, Jim.
But, I mean, it'd be interesting to find out what are they doing? Like the full schedule, what they're doing, how many people is it taking to do that? And then I'm finding out, okay, well, if the city took that over tomorrow and just replicated what they've been doing, what would it cost?
That's the number I was looking for.
Because I, I kind of suspect we'd end up back more to having it occasionally opened for special events. And that'd be about it. Right, so.
It would be really expensive.
Yeah. I mean, to, to replicate what she's doing would probably cost a fortune if, if she wasn't using low, low wage interns and a bunch of volunteers. But, but then, you know, so at some point, something's going to change. And it's either not going to be a volunteer-run organization and it'll become a city-run situation or, I mean, it's gonna be one of the two.
So, and I, I absolutely agree with your logic. The, the thing that bothers me, and Bijou, I know you're, you're next. If we were gonna, if we were gonna sit down and design a museum for the city of Capel, I don't think it would look like what we have down there.
Well, but once again, yeah, uh, but that's what we have and we've spent, we'll end up spending four hundred thousand dollars to get it.
That's true.
So, you know, I, I kind of feel an obligation that if we've invested funds in it, we should try to make as much use of what we've invested going forward.
Bijou?
Yeah, I think Chris and Cliff spend a lot of time in museums and we should be appreciating them. And I think he has a desk in one of the museums that he sits there and entertains, you know, the, the people visiting there. So we appreciate them, what they're doing for the city of Capel and training people there. But we need, I know they initially put a business plan together when they proposed it. It sounds like no fund was received from the state. So what is the plan? What, what's going forward? Maybe we need to sit down with them and find out a collaborative effort to come up with a plan so that we can move forward.
Okay. I think I'm hearing pretty much of a consensus that we want to work with them to come up with a plan and help them with some of the logistics. And that we would go ahead and approve the hundred and thirty for this year? Yes. All right. Good? Yes. All right. Um, any other comments on the, on the citizen, on the charitable organizations tonight?
Well, every board I've been on that applied for grants, it was one of the hardest things to get. And that was long before the grants, that was back when they were available. I mean, it's always a, a dream of every arts organization or whatever to apply for grant money.
You know, I, I think Chris went a lot further along than I thought she was going to.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not just the current political environment. It's a very hard get under any economy, any circumstance.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's go on and move on. We've got one more item on the agenda, and that's our number six, citizens' appearance. We do have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Shaw. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your address. Presentation for individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. Uh, no personal attacks. Many speakers should be made against the member of the council, the mayor, individual group or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. My name's Danny Shaw, two fifteen West Wing Drive. Thank you for saving the best for last.
Patience.
I really don't have a pair of statements. I just have one thing to put out there and then, uh, just gonna comment after that. I was looking at my, uh, tax assessment for the year. And I happened to notice on there the exemptions I was getting. And I note on there, the city of Capel, for homestead exemptions, giving me thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which is one quarter of the top three highest and one-third of what even the school district is. So I'd like you to consider raising the homestead exemption from the city. That's number one. Uh, after that, three minutes is not enough time to go into detail. So I'm just gonna present a list of topics that I'm still fact-finding and researching that are pertinent to the budget in some way or another. Now, some of this even was addressed tonight to a degree. The first one is the SRO program. Uh, I have some concerns there about, uh, the responsibility for that program and some aspects of transparency and efficacy. Next is the Veterans Memorial Project. Again, some transparency and funding questions about that. And then certain public works, uh, questions about some programs or lack of programs and costs associated with those. And as usual, continued advocacy for equitable charges for utilities and services by changing the ratio of basic fees versus usage charges. In other words, I'm advocating for lower base rates and higher tier rates. You get the same amount of money, but it's equitable. You're not charging the people that are using it the least and saving money for the people that are getting the most benefit. Uh, with, and I have talked to various departments in the last few weeks and months and I will continue to do so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your comments. Therefore, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at nine eighteen.